Now, just for folks here tonight and on Zoom, I'll wait a minute, thirty seconds to a minute to let everyone get who's attending by Zoom, get onto Zoom. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of December thirteenth. So nice to have you here. I will call the meeting to order officially. And we'll start tonight with a roll call. May we have roll call?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. Commissioner Si.
Here.
Commissioner De Fever.
Here.
Vice Chair Amir.
Here.
And Chair Williams.
Here.
And we have one excused member, Commissioner Woodward, who is excused tonight.
Thank you so much. Right before we turn to the noticed agenda items tonight, this is an opportunity for folks in with us to speak to any matters that do not appear on the agenda. If there's anyone here who wishes to do so, please step up to the podium or let us know on Zoom if you'd like to make a public comment on a matter that doesn't appear on the agenda. I don't see anyone in here with us, present, anyone online? There are no hands raised, Chair. Okay, we'll turn to a staff briefing if there is one.
I actually do not have one for this evening. This is our last hearing of the year, so I wish everybody a happy holiday and it's been a great year to work with you guys. Been a lot of very tough things that we've conquered, so I appreciate each and every one of you, and I look forward to next year.
It has been a busy year and we just wanted to acknowledge staff and all of the hard work that has gone into all of the meetings this year and in all past years as well, but this has been especially busy. So we've got some minutes before us from a meeting we had on August ninth to review and approve. Yes, and I'll ask if there are any revisions, comments.
Yeah, to my knowledge, Commissioner De Fever, I don't think was in.
Exactly. I listed as present, but I was not at that meeting. I wasn't even in the country.
Yeah, we did. I had an exchange with Chris by email about that, and I think you will be updating the minutes to show that both Commissioners De Fever and Si were absent on the night. We won't amend them.
Outside that, I'm okay with with the comments.
Commissioner De Fever, any?
I will abstain from that since.
We just had that conversation.
I could make something up.
No, no, no. I don't have any changes to the minutes. Commissioner Si was not present, Commissioner Woodward's not with us. I think we have enough people here, the two of us, to be able to.
You are actually able to vote on these and be absent if you have read them and reviewed them.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't yield for the accuracy because I wasn't present.
That's fine. I just wanted to let let you know.
I'll make a motion to approve the August ninth minutes.
I will second the motion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motions are approved. And now we'll turn to the noticed items tonight. There's one.
It does not pass because two people voted to approve the minutes, and so we'd need a majority. And in this case of two abstentions, it fails because it's, I don't think this is.
I think, isn't it the majority of who was present at that meeting, however? We've been through this before.
Yeah, that's how we've done it in the past.
And there were three people at that meeting and two of them are present.
Now, one distinction, there may have been a distinction, which it may have been a majority in attendance at the, I had always understood that it was a majority of people who are present for the meeting.
Yeah.
I, the way I understand it is it's the majority of the people present today at the meeting and not who were present in the August meeting, so we'd need the majority of today's attendees to approve the minutes, but if.
So we could bring these back in the new year. I have quite a few minutes that have backed up on my notes. So I could have a minutes meeting for you and spend some time on that. So we can bring those back at the beginning of the new year.
We'll have an evening of minutes.
Yeah, we can just move this, continue it.
Okay, very good. Well, let's.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do you need me to make a motion to continue? Yes, so I'll make that motion to continue to a future hearing. All right, all in favor of that motion?
Right.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Those are continued, and now we'll move to tonight's single public hearing item. This is a consideration of amendment to an existing conditional use permit for the Tiburon Peninsula Club. Is there a staff memorandum this evening? And actually, yes, so I can review sort of the process
Yes.
for folks because we do have, apparently, we do have a lot of people who have are attending by Zoom and there are folks here this evening. So just to manage the time, the applicant has, there's a staff memorandum, I'm sorry, a staff report on the item. And then we turn to the presentation by the applicant and the applicant has twenty minutes to present. And then I will open up the matter to the public for comment. So I'll open up the public hearing and each member of the public, both here, present and online, has three minutes to speak. That is being recorded, the, that time will show up on the monitor here, and I will also ask Vice Chair to help me watch that time and just indicate to the speaker. I know it can be sometimes a little nerve wracking to speak, so Commissioner Amir and I will just give people a helpful reminder that their time is nearly over. We'll give you sort of a thirty second reminder. And then the applicant will have five minutes to rebut and answer, respond to any of the issues that have come up. And then I close the public comment and return to the commission for deliberation as we talk through the issue. So I just wanted to outline that process. We do ask, we don't have as many people here as we have in the past in the room, but I just do ask that folks hold their applause. That's not to limit your freedom of expression. It's just to to ensure that everyone feels comfortable to speak, even if they have, you know, they in on a particular item or in the minority. We want people to feel comfortable and not, you know, nervous to speak and that they feel safe to speak. So that's our process for this evening. So I will turn now to the staff for a report on tonight's item.
So I'm going to be rather brief tonight simply because I know we have quite a few people here, and I know that the applicant will run down some of the particulars that I would be speaking about tonight. So what is before you tonight is an amendment to an existing use permit. And I did include that as an attachment, so you would understand the resolution of the previous actions. But what the Tiburon Peninsula Club is requesting tonight is an amendment to their use permit so that they can use an existing tennis court for pickleball use. And part of that use is one pickleball court would be converted, and that can accommodate four total games, and that includes two to four people on each court, so up to sixteen players. And that game time is usually limited to an hour and a half. I guess you get on, you get off. I don't actually, I haven't actually submitted to this craze, but that's, that's part of what happens, and it's going to occur seven days a week from the hours of nine to seven thirty. And staff imagines, and this is just, I'm sure that the applicant can help us with this, but that Friday afternoons and weekends, as well as holidays, are probably the highest time period in which people use the courts. There wasn't a specification in the original application as to them wanting to use one or more courts, but I do believe there is an intent, and the applicant can speak to that, that there may be another court identified to be used in the future. And what we have said is if that's the case, there would be another hearing for that expansion unless the planning commission determines that they can do up to those two courts, and that would be up to you during these public hearings or during this public hearing. What I do want to state that there is no lighting on these courts. So particularly at this time of the year, it'll be a shorter period of playing time. In the summertime, there's a little bit more time in which you could use these courts. And as everybody probably is here to talk about, and we understand is part of how this came to our kind of knowledge is that we had some complaints about noise. And so I did ask the Tiburon Peninsula Club to conduct noise hearings as well as to create some buffers and barriers around the courts and to change their rackets so that we could have a noise reduction through that. And so I know that the TPC did provide to you a most recent noise study that I believe was dated in October, so that was a late mail for you because didn't receive it until the other day, but it's much, it's similar, and it does show you that the noise doesn't go over the threshold of what is permitted by the noise ordinance or our guidelines within the general plan with respect to noise. What I did include is a resolution for this amendment to the use permit, along with an exhibit with some conditions that, of course, we can amend and we can look at as we go through the process. And with that, I think and that, you know, we did, we did determine that the project is exempt from CEQA, and I laid that out in the staff report as well with respect to a Caddex under fifteen three oh seven, as well as just a general exemption through fifteen three hundred point two. Oh, and one thing that we should also state is that I was concerned about, is this going to increase the number of members or traffic and parking, but the numbers are, member numbers are not increasing as a result of this use. As I understand it, there's still quite a list of people who wish to be members, and this is not open to the public, so there wouldn't be additional parking or traffic issues with respect to this use. And with that, I conclude my very brief presentation and look to you for any questions or further clarification.
Are there any questions for staff on the, on the report?
Commissioner. I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the applicant presentation.
I had one, one point of clarification. Oh, Commissioner De Fever.
No, go ahead.
Okay. And I may have another question, but one is just, and I was looking for the application itself to see the, I thought the requested hours from not, for from nine AM to seven PM, and someone did submit a letter, a piece of late mail and asking why the discrepancy, and I just thought I'd put that to you.
Yeah, am I on now? Yes. So, you know, I did notice that discrepancy as well. And I would love for the applicant to address that, but I believe it was from nine to seven and not nine to seven thirty.
So that potentially would, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner De Fever, did you have any questions?
No, I'll also wait.
Okay, terrific. Excellent. Okay, so we'll hear from the applicant now. Yes, and when you just step up to the podium, state your name. No, not at all. Just be sure, just so everyone can hear you, you know, use the mic and and state your name for the record as well and your.
We just need one minute to make sure the machine turns on and then that can begin thinking.
We won't start the clock on you in the first minute here.
Fine, with the twenty minutes before we get started. I assume this is just.
Three minutes. There we go. Okay.
Or you want other speakers on the phone or?
Okay, I think we'll start your time.
Okay. See which way I should stand here. This is fine? Stand this way.
You speak into the mic. That'd be great too, because I have to have this all on a recording. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Can hear that. Okay. Hello, thanks for having us here tonight, and my name is Matt Hart. I am a board member at Tiburon Peninsula Club. And I've been a board member for about two years at TPC as well as a resident in Tiburon. I live in the Delmar neighborhood for about twelve years. With me tonight.
My name is Lucas Malka. I'm a general manager of Tiburon Peninsula Club. Been here for almost two years as well. It's great to be here tonight.
So we put together a presentation. Court use and pickleball at TPC. That we'll probably use about ten minutes to run through here. There we go. So thanks for the nice intro, Director. The ask is support continued use of existing TPC sports courts for pickleball use. Our presentation is an overview on pickleball itself. TPC is a part of the community. Pickleball at TPC, a little bit about the history of pickleball and what we've been doing and how it arrived and how we're using the courts. And TPC working with the community and with the town manager, this has been a eighteen month process of assessing, trying to mitigate, trying to improve, and it's been a good process, so thank you for that. And then an overview on the location, the impact and some of the technical stuff. When I'll hand the microphone to Lucas to help out one. Okay, so a little about pickleball. First of all, I also haven't totally succumbed to the craze, but I, so I did a little bit of research on it when they asked me to present. I'm, it's kind of odd that I'm not even a pickleball player myself really, but it is the fastest growing sport in the United States. There was a report I found from the Sports, Sports Foundation Institute Association that was just reported, that just came out. It's got a higher participation rate than tennis and golf and basketball. It only, only cycling and running have higher participation rates in the US than pickleball already. It's the third highest participation rate. So that kind of shocked me, and then I started reading the report and more, and it makes sense why. Three year average growth rate has been a hundred and fifty eight percent of this sport. And the, the, one of the largest contingencies is the senior contingent. Twenty percent of the player population is over fifty five years old. So it's really opened up a sport to a community of people that probably put their ball sports away and, you know, start playing golf at some point in your life. If you haven't seen it, I, the best way I could describe it is it's a cross between tennis, badminton, ping pong, just kind of a racket sports have really evolved. And if you've ever tried to learn tennis at a, at my age, as I just tried to learn tennis as well three years ago, it is very, very difficult sport to learn, very expensive sport to learn, takes a lot of lessons. If you didn't grow up playing tennis, it is hard, hard, and I like to think I can pick up sports. Okay, but I'm, it's brutal. But with pickleball, you can start playing in like thirty minutes and, and, and soon after you're, you're, you're playing, you're enjoying the sport. So it's, I view it as a more low cost inclusive sport than than most racket sports, and that's why it's, it's got the adoption rate that it has, in my opinion. It's also a lot of fun. I don't know why that little thing is. There's a couple quotes as I've just talked to members at TPC. One of them said to me that every time, every time she leaves the tennis court, she's frustrated, and every time she, she plays pickleball, she walks off the court with a smile. And then I had this, this quote come back from quite a few people that pickleball brought me back to the TPC. You know, your, your, your kids get out of high school or, you know, they stop using the TPC, you stop using the TPC, but then pickleball kind of brought them back, and it's been wonderful for the club. A little bit about TPC as part of the community. We were founded in nineteen forty eight. We have seven hundred family members, a hundred and seventy five senior members. And Lucas did a little homework on that. That means we, within that group of people, we have about two thousand members that reside on the peninsula here. So if our population is around ten thousand, that's twenty percent of our population. So we are a big part of community and we serve a big part of the community at TPC. We do have a guest policy. Back to the director's comment that there is a waitlist of, of, I think, close to a hundred people from the peninsula as well, so we do allow guests, but we have some caps on that. And I didn't know this until I joined the board, and I should have realized it earlier, but we're, we're an amenity for recruiting and retaining the police and firefighters. We open up our fitness facility and our pool to the police and firefighters, so I often see some of the firefighters swimming in the morning. And we're a premier athletic club in Marin, and this is good for property values. I know when I bought our home twelve years ago, TPC was part of my Tiburon dream as, you know, the, the package in coming into Tiburon. And, you know, a lot of the neighborhoods have a, have a TPC sort of club, and I think, I think we do a very good job at that, offering that amenity to the community. And I'll hand it over to Luke to talk a little bit about the staff.
Can everybody hear me okay?
We need to be recorded, yeah.
To do that, I'm sorry. My apologies. I'll try not to be too loud then. So I wanted to mention that we are one of the largest employers in Tiburon after Reed School. Obviously, that's a, that's a big deal, about hundred and ten staff members, which is, which is a big contingent. We host community events, Challenger, which is a public event. We also volunteered to host sort of a business day for the town of Tiburon as well. That didn't happen this year, but hopefully will happen next year. The ratio of our members who are capable of playing pickleball versus playing tennis is about four to one, and that's sort of a physical capacity of who can get on a tennis court and safely play the sport versus not. I think it's an important piece to understand considering how popular that sport is within our club and how frequently members are not only joining our club, but sort of redevelop themselves within the club because of the fact that there's an amenity and there's something they can now do every day and have a great time, not only physically and work on their fitness and wellness, but also psychologically and socially. They can spend time with each other, which is so important as a really real fabric to our club's existence. So a few things when it comes to the pickleball at TPC, I'm going to use this super extra pointer that Dina gave me right here. This is the court that is used for pickleball currently. I don't know how many of you know our campus, but that is what was repurposed about three years ago. There are four courts, maximum capacity, and Dina brought this up, is sixteen people that could play on those courts. In the three years, we received four complaints to TPC that we, we note every complaint that comes directly to TPC, and we had four of those over a period of four years or three years, I'm sorry, with, which we believe is, is an interesting number to note. We did, as we start that process of getting pickleball in TPC, wanted to be very proactive in understanding how can we limit impact on anybody around us? We want to be a good neighbor. We want to be good for the community. We want to be reasonable with what we invest and how we approach the fact that we are part of this community in this neighborhood. And we did invest about seventy one thousand dollars to mitigate disruption to neighbors through different venues, and we'll talk about them a little later. I don't want to steal the thunder from the next part of the presentation. And then we also, to ensure that those mitigations at length are executed every day, we stationed permanently a staff member around those courts for which we obviously pay as a cost to the club, just simply to ensure that the paddles that are used, et cetera, are all checked every time somebody comes to the club. And this is our commitment to the community to ensure that we're doing what's right. When it comes to the playability of the sport in our club, the ask is to be from nine AM to seven thirty PM. Obviously, five months out of the year, and that's again, important to note, is that five months out of the year, we really finish playing at four thirty likely, just because of the light, right? So there's no artificial lighting in there, so anytime there's no natural light, there's no way for us to play in addition to temperature and wind and all that stuff. But that is an important point, so the ask is for seven thirty. There is no traffic input considering the fact that we've been playing for about three years and all the members or membership number within our club is capped. So we cannot exceed it any further than we already are, and Dina mentioned there's a substantial waitlist, about a hundred and sixty families right now, which is about five year wait time. So, yes, and there's a lot of those members who join our club that specifically talk about I would love to join because I can play pickleball, and there's a lot of locations, they just don't have pickleball, so there's a big, big component of importance. We, so that's why obviously there's not going to be any traffic impact on our community. We did execute a third party study. All that is complied for you guys in your packets, so I'm sure you're intimately familiar with it at this point, and we will talk to it in just a little bit and bring some more detail to it. And then, you know, the thought about four additional courts is sort of related to a future thought as we know that we are at capacity with our pickleball courts, especially on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, which is, you know, when members finished work, they want to come, they want to relax, they want to socialize, they want to interact, they want to commit to their wellness and spend time together, and pickleball is a phenomenal way to do it. As I move forward, I'm going to pass it back to Matt to talk about mitigation effects.
Thank you. I'm actually going to run back. We didn't have this on the, on our agenda, Lucas, but I wanted to point out, is this how I do that?
Yes.
So this is how we, you might ask how we started playing pickleball at TPC. How did it even start? What happened is if you, if you've ever seen those little portable nets that they do the little kid lessons on, someone just bought some pickleball nets probably five years ago and, or pickleball paddles around five years ago, and they moved that net over and they just started playing. And then that eventually created a complaint that we started responding to, and that's how this evolved. So we actually, someone started playing up on these courts. And then, and then we, we, the, you know, the growth of the sport occurred and kind of evolved to where we are, where we are today on these lower courts that Lucas pointed out. And as Lucas mentioned, we've, we've taken some proactive measures to mitigate the effects to our neighbors. One of the first things we did because of the demand of the sport, we needed to start controlling the court use a little bit. Otherwise, you have people lining up and competing for courts. So one of the first things we did, this is a screenshot of, of our app on the iPhone where you actually have to book the pickleball courts to use them. So what happens is you just go on the phone, you book a pickleball court here, and then we also installed this guard desk that checks people in and just manages to make sure that we're orderly contact and it's members that are playing. There are people that are supposed to play. You've probably heard about, if you've heard anything about pickleball, there's, there are more quiet paddles. What's the term? Polycore? Yeah, so polycore paddles. So we do require that our members use polycore paddles. We have a system to make sure they're using them, and we can also provide polycore paddles to those people that don't bring them. And then finally, probably the biggest improvement we did is we we put this fencing up. This, this used to be a chain link fence up here. And it is a, a sound containing fence, so it's actually in the courts, it's quite loud now. It's gotten louder because the sound is contained in there. But if you pull up to pickleball, if you pull up to the court and someone's playing and you're in the parking lot, it's a significant difference to the, the sound that's able to pass through that. Anything more on the fence that you'd share?
Sure.
Yeah.
So that fence originally, that material and that technology was developed by NASA, and they use this as a lining for the cabins to make sure that the noise didn't transfer from the engine bay into where the passengers were. So that was kind of an interesting point. The name of that material is acoustic block and acoustic fence, and that's something that we have done obviously proactively to serve the community. It's a very thick material, very heavy, extremely heavy, and, and contains the sound within that if any of you were there, understand how much louder is on actual court versus outside of the court, and I think that's important to note.
Yeah, sure. So this is just an excerpt from the community noise exposure. The, the, the area ordinance, but the, the area circle or with the rectangle at the top is these are the community noise exposure levels we understand for resident, residential areas. And the light shaded area is what's deemed normally accessible. So the number to remember there is sixty decibels. And then the rectangle at the bottom is playgrounds, tennis courts, other recreation areas. The normally acceptable area for, I believe this is average, right? Average, yeah. So average noise exposure is seventy decibels, so sixty residential. And then the noise for courts at seventy is from the research we did. And then Lucas mentioned we did a, we were asked and, and, and also worked with Dina on putting together a third party engineer noise study who I think is. On putting together a third party engineer noise study who I think is available tonight for, yeah, where we can make them available afterwards. But Lucas ran that, so I'm gonna hand back that.
So that was a very detailed process and, and Dina gave us very detailed requests of what town needed to see. So we wanted to make sure that we facilitated that, brought a third party company that's completely unrelated to us. To understand exactly what that noise impact is in multiple locations. And uh, some of you that reviewed this obviously understand, this is our court, these are the locations where we measured sound.
Um, that, that NAL two, if you can't tell, that's the homes that are, and the red line is actually the street.
That's Mar West right here. And obviously the closest neighbors, that's where we measure the sound. Cause that's where the sound would be the loudest. And we did a current noise study. And then we modeled the noise study in case we ever in the future had eight courts to understand what that impact would be. Uh, and what uh, came back is the fact that uh, our pickleball play did not exceed fifty eight decibels. Which is obviously not only under the permissible playground and tennis court noise levels of seventy. But it's under residential noise levels of no activity whatsoever. And I think that's obviously a phenomenal news and pickleball is rarely um, this quiet. But I believe and know that this is mainly due to the fact that proactive measures were instituted. To make sure that we do what we're supposed to be for the community. That's correct. Yes. Not to, with, with, sorry, with not two courts, but with eight courts.
With eight courts, excuse me.
That's correct.
So yeah, that, that's on a high level, our presentation. Um, there's more in the board packet. And we'd be happy to involve our sound engineer, whatever other information you need. We tried to make it concise. Once again, the ask here is to support continued use of the existing TPC court for pickleball. And help support our collective community's demand for this sport and activity. Um, it's a popular, diverse, inclusive activity. Our noise exposure is fifteen to thirty percent below. The standards that are, the guidelines that were set for us. Uh, we are using existing facilities. And uh, most of all, it's fun, healthy and builds community. So thank you very much for uh, time and your consideration today.
Thank you so much.
Oh, excuse me.
If you uh, yeah.
I have one more thing real quick. I really wanna thank uh, Dina and Greg, cause there's a lot of work and time that they committed. And working with us proactively to make sure that we instituted every possible measure to reduce the noise impact. So anyway, thank you all for your time. It was.
Thank you. And I'll ask you to stay there because I think we may have some questions. I have some questions. So well, well, this is our opportunity to ask those of you. So I'll start with my fellow commissioners. Um, I'll go to the end, uh, since I started with you, Daniel, uh, to Commissioner De Fever.
I would like to understand the sound measurements better because I have a little bit of familiarity with sound engineering. Not a lot, I'm certainly no expert. Um, and I see that they mentioned LEQ in here and that is always an average. So if you have loud spikes, let's say um, a spike is up to eighty decibels. And maybe that happens, you know, a few times uh, throughout several hours. That'll get averaged in and your average will still look low. It could be fifty, it could be forty even. It depends on how many spikes you have. So I, I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe your sound engineer could answer this.
So, so, so few things. Uh, great question. First of all, thank you. Um. So those spikes you're referring to, those are sounds that last second or less, right? And that's important to understand also. Uh, we do have our sound engineering, a si- sound engineer on Zoom with us, so I can have him speak and, and even further. However, I did ask this question as well, because it was important to understand. We were requested to provide averages in our study, because that's how normally the sound gets measured. To have a good understanding of constant impact. However, the loudest spike within the whole process never exceeded sixty two decibels.
Okay.
Which is far beyond, uh, below seventy. Does that help you? Or would you like me to get the?
That is very helpful. Um, sixty is, you know, certainly way below uh, my random example of eighty. Uh, because I am aware of the town um, ordinances and what the caps are. Um, do, do you have the, the data of how many times it's spiking above sixty, for example? Could we see that? Does your sound engineer, could he show it to us?
We would have to get with our sound engineer uh, to, to provide that information. We just, obviously we, he provided the report per request of the town. That relates with every single data point relates exactly what was asked. So that's what we have for you today, but we could obviously.
Yeah, yeah. It's not a criticism. I'm aware that that's the way these are, are regularly uh, written up. Um, but also being aware from previous experience.
Love some audio.
We have some back.
Happening there.
Yeah, because I'm having trouble with the television. People are telling me they can't see the presentation.
Oh, so unfortunately I brought it up on my phone and forgot to turn the sound on. So I do apologize for my technical incapability.
Okay. I just wanna make sure everyone hears me. I don't wanna have to repeat everything we're saying right now. Or well, we can, if, if they're not hearing us on Zoom. Um, I will let you interrupt me if that's the case. But anyway, I'm aware that that's how these reports are usually. Um, it's just standard to do them on averages. But when I'm thinking about from the residence perspective, I'm trying to think about what it would be like if it's spiking frequently. So that's where that question's going. And I would be interested to see the data, but we can, uh, I certainly wanna pass the questions to my fellow commissioners and see where we, where we head.
And I think it's great to also hear that, that when you mentioned those spikes, right, and how many of them happen. Um, and whatever the amount is that would be in a study, good to know that still doesn't get remotely close to seventy.
That is, that is definitely nice to know. Yeah, that's definitely a good factor for sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Amir.
Yeah, just understand, just understand how the uh, from the study, how it was conducted. She said it was with um, eight courts. Is that right?
It was four courts play and then there was a modeling for eight.
Okay, so the, the four courts, they were, um, all four courts were playing.
Correct. So we did this measurement over the weekend.
So they were all playing at the same time?
All playing at the same time. The measurement lasted three days.
Okay.
Constantly. So we have a very good.
So you did different, so it's basically different hours of the day?
All hours.
All hours, okay. And, and then for modeling purposes, you just said, okay, um. Uh, if it was eight courts, it would be double the nor, eight courts all at the same time?
So I will refrain to our sound engineer, so he can.
Okay, yeah.
So he can maybe answer that question. Um, just make sure that um, he can raise his hand.
And we, we may want to, uh, we may want to actually go through our questions. Because if, we may have a few questions for the sound and, and then he can answer them all at once and um, so.
We, we do have him online if you'd like.
Okay, terrific. Yeah, why don't we have him keep track of the questions that come up for him? And we will do the same.
And let me know when you want him to talk.
Sure. And then um. You know, I have a question for staff afterwards. That's fine. Uh, I'm, I'm okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just wait.
Okay. Um, uh, Commissioner Si, did you have any questions?
Just have a couple of questions. Um, did you receive the benefit of any studies that may have been conducted in the past? Um, for pickleball purposes at um, the beach road courts? Or any studies that were done at the Richardson Bay Park Courts?
We have not. We, the, the second I started, we actually conducted our own, own studies first. Cause we wanted to make sure that we were under sound levels that noise element permitted. To again, be proactive and be a good neighbor. So we conducted multiple ones ourselves. And then per request, Dina's request, that was the only uh, one that we conducted.
Lucas, one of the other stats that you had from the sound engineers report related to, I guess, average sounds related to things like parks, tennis courts, for example. Was that specific to TPC or just generally?
It's a general.
It was, it was generally.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and gen- okay, and generally, and I think this is driven by the question and answer that you had with Commissioner De Fever a minute ago. The, for, for uh, the category that includes tennis courts, it, the decibel levels go up to about seventy?
Seventy is allowable under normal circumstances, correct. Normally acceptable.
This is an excerpt from the.
Tiburon, Town, Town of Tiburon website, actually.
So that seventy would be considered normally acceptable.
Great. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
Do you mind going back to the aerial, um, the photograph that where you, uh, yes, that one, thank you. So this is just to kind of clarify for the record, really. Um, that what's outlined in yellow there is the court that has been in use for the last three years. Pickleball has been played there.
Correct.
And you, TPC have received four complaints in that.
That's correct. For individual.
For individual complaints in that time period. Is that, i- if you know, and, and I can ask this question of staff, is that um. Ha- have, have staff, well, maybe I should ask staff, the question is how many maybe independent complaints they've received during that time period? Um, uh, um, well, ask that now. Commissioner Amir, and I have the same question as to, it, it, did you? You had noticed there had been some cla- complaints. I wasn't sure if you were talking about what TPC had reported to you, or if there were additional complaints directly to staff.
We have, we had additional complaints that came into the town and that was part of my um, needing to reach out to TPC at that time. To figure out what we can do. Um, then I worked with TPC with respect to kind of wrapping um, the courts. And then trying to get the noise studies after that time. So we would see if there was some mitigation that would have happened. Um, so we did receive um, complaints from people on Marsh Road, up above in the uh, uh, condos and apartments. Um, on Mar West. Um, and then you did receive quite a bit. Uh, I think it was like a survey with at least fifty signatures that we just received. I haven't received that before.
Right, but I, I think the question is, a- after, after the uh, acoustic fence was put up.
Yes.
Was there additional complaints after that? I mean, not, not what was the complaints for this hearing today. I mean, acoustic fence has been on, on for a while. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have received complaints since that time.
Do, do you have a, ha- if you had to quantify the number?
I had to quantify the number. It would probably be around five to six.
Over the three year period?
Um, most, you know, I don't really, because I don't wanna say that I, I, I answer a lot of phone calls.
Right.
But um, I haven't really kept a tally of them.
Right.
But what I do know is that um, mu- much of the complaints came during the summertime. When the, when the hours were longer, of course, with daylight and people are outside more in general and windows are open. So, you know, the noise can be a little bit harder on them.
Um, and did you notice a drop in the number of complaints after some of the mitigation member, mitigation um, uh, was put into place?
So with respect to the people on Marsh Road, I hadn't heard from them since that time. I have still received some complaints with um, people up the hill, you know, cause there is sort of a bowl that. The car, the conditions there are that there's a bowl, right? And there is noise that does go up the hill. But the adjacent apartments and condo, condos actually on Marsh, I, I.
Right.
I haven't heard from them in a while.
And I, and hey, I, I know it's difficult to, to qua- to quantify, you haven't kept track. But in terms of the people up the hill. If, if, just in terms of independent individual complaints, would you say that's, you know, on one hand, on two hands, on, do you have it sort of ballpark?
It's a ballpark about between five to eight on a regular basis. But I will say, since daylight savings has been in effect, I've received a lot less calls.
Right. Um, and uh, and then just back to this. So when you, when you, you had the noise study done, in the event you were to add another four courts, four pickleball courts. Another one tennis court.
Yeah.
Um, but, but you recognize that, that in order to do that, you'd come back to the commission. To make a request on the CUP. You're not asking that of us tonight. Um, and, and you recognize that if you were to do that, rather than just adding it based on a noise study, you, you'd have to come back and go through the same.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was, it, it's helpful to see that, you know, potentially helpful for you, I'm sure. Um, to see that, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Cause I know this, this sort of evolved um, eh, outside of the normal processes.
That's right. Yeah. And the noise study to do that was with the intention of, what is the impact to the neighbors? Is this something we should even invest time and effort into?
Right, exactly. Good time to do it while you have that.
Right, while we're doing that. Yeah, yeah. And I don't know that our four complaints are the same. I can't prove that.
Right.
Yeah, um, I do know that one of the, of our four complaints is someone that bought their house in two thousand twenty-three uh, on that Mar West side as well. So.
Great, thank you. It's just, I just wanted to get a feel. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from folks tonight. We'll get a better sense of that.
And we address complaints at the board meetings every day, as you, as you'd imagine, or every, every meeting.
Okay.
Um, acoustic engineer then?
Yes, let's turn to the engineer now and go back to Commissioner Amir's question, if you wanna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Is he, uh, is he on?
I've turned on the audio for Elias.
Yes, I'm here.
So Elias, I'll, I'll repeat my question. Um, so the question was basically uh, with regards to. How uh, the four courts uh, in terms of the noise study? And how, how was that extrapolated into the eight courts? I guess, which measured overall the noise study, so.
Yes, that's a good question.
Can you elaborate just on the process?
Can you guys hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Says he's. Talking, um.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hear me?
Oh. Um. What's this?
I'm gonna promote him to a panelist. Maybe that'll fix the problem.
Okay.
Okay, just let me know.
The volume is muted on your computer. I don't know if that's.
Oh, that's right. Down below, you're right.
It's so, it's so, it's always supposed to be muted. It's kind of this weird, that gets muted, but Zoom's supposed to come through. We've been having some technical problems with Zoom.
Right.
Today, since, I don't know.
At the top, I see it says not hearing anything.
We want to. Next to the, what you're hearing.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think, well, let's let staff, we'll let staff resolve this. Thank you though.
Just give us, just give us a few moments. Just give us a few moments.
Try to.
Can we promote him or he's not?
Can you hear me?
I promoted him to a panelist. Elias, can you try speaking?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
He says he's talking.
Yeah, um.
Can you hear me?
Perhaps we could call him on your cell phone, Lucas, and he could speak through that if that's okay with uh.
Yeah, that's fine.
Absolutely, yeah.
And we'll put a mic near it so that we can record it. Thank you.
Sure.
Does this mean we won't be hearing the public comment? I mean, is this gonna be a problem for the whole meeting?
Hello Elias, I can hear you. So you can answer questions.
Yeah, um, so Elias, uh, did you, uh, this is Commissioner, did you hear my question before?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, so the question was, um, the study was done for four courts. That were all in, um, they were all uh, occupied, I guess. Uh, but the study is based on eight courts, I guess. And the, the question is, how, how was that study done based on the eight courts? I mean, how did you extrapolate basically the noise um, that would come out of, out of eight courts, all, all playing at the same time?
And let's uh, we wanna make sure that uh, you can be heard here and on Zoom. So we're gonna try this. And, and how do you say your first, just slowly respond to that so we can test this out and check with the staff to make sure this is working.
Hear me, okay. Yeah, that's a good question. Well, the thing that, that we did in order to um, duplicate or uh, use. The, some data for the additional four courts. For people orders is that we measure noise levels at existing people balls. But we have another microphone of those courts in the middle of those courts. And also I asked for the schedule and basically choose the times where the people play balls. For the noisy time. So that we can use like a conservative values at the worst case scenario. And then I use that data and it would in the other future area where the future um, potential for people balls. Will be um, our plan. So that's why, that, that's the way I used to duplicate the data. Using them consecutive, uh, consecutive hours of existing course.
So if they, so if it would just be four courts. Would the noise level be lower than your study that you hypothetically put eight courts or no? If it would just be four courts, because the study is based on eight court, an eight court study, right?
So, but if it was just four courts, would the noise level be lower? Okay, okay. Um, all right.
If by most conservative, you mean the the times when you anticipate that there'll be the most activity, the loudest?
Yes, the loudest.
Yeah, yeah, we're just uh looking at each other to see if there's any other questions.
Yeah, I have no other questions for.
Um, Elias, this is Commissioner and the Beaver. Um, just to make sure I really understand, so you're not averaging in the nighttime hours when there's no sound?
It's like, I only use the daytime hour. I will concentrate my uh or I know it's uh within hours of the, of the, 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 the. Even using a nighttime hour.
Okay, I I thought you probably did not, but I just wanted to make absolutely sure. Um, and do you have data that could be delivered to us in some way that shows how many times uh the noise spikes above, say, you know, forty-five decibels and and how frequently? Did you take the data so we could see when, basically, you know, when the paddle hits the ball? I think that's the loudest point. Um, how often that happens? Do you have, do you have that charted or do you only have averages?
Oh, I I I can determine that. I can pick a, I can pick a bookie image of the data. And I did study that a couple of weeks ago, and it was so difficult to determine the big level of the pickleball. Because not only the people affecting those areas, but also the traffic noise and even birds or people arguing and touching. So again, I have a lot of data. I did kind of like a deeper list of the data. I extract those pieces from exclusively from the pickleball.
So it's hard to tell if it's a car or a bird or a pickleball racket?
Yeah, I I mean, yeah, I mean, I I if I can, I can look deeper the data and just extract those pieces only from the pickleball. But yes, that's a little different because we have cars, airplanes, and you know, traffic noise and everything.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. Um, any other commissioners to buy the?
No, I can maybe. Yeah, it looks like.
Look at your computer screen. It says the host would like you to unmute. I think, could you try that?
Can you answer me?
Are you on the cell phone?
Uh, yeah, I'm still there. Yeah, but can you hear me through?
Do you see on your screen a window that's asking you to unmute? It's very visible here, but we're we're not sure if you see that.
Yeah, I'm talking through Zoom as well.
No, that's because I'm good.
Unmute him.
I'm muted on Zoom, but I'm not sure if he can hear my voice.
So, okay, so that that's.
It says you're unmuted and we see.
It seems to be one of your, uh, as I, it sounds from staff, and let me just check in. You're able to hear when you, the usual on Zoom, uh, directed to see if it appears to be.
It appears to be recording, yes. We just can't get people to come into the room. Um, we do have, we do have some attendees.
Problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, well, while we have the sound engineer, or anyone else like to ask a question?
I'm okay.
I don't know. I don't have any questions. Uh, any other questions? Uh, Commissioner, no.
Okay, Elias, thank you very much. I'm going to hand you back to Lucas, since this is his cell phone, and thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Yeah, um.
It's helpful that it sounds like you're about.
Yeah.
For over the results, um.
Yeah, I, this was one of the first, this was the first time I saw these reports too, but it's impossible to read and overheard it. The ambient noise of those areas, this is the one court study, Commissioner Amir, and then we did the two court study, study to extrapolate that Elias was talking about. But just the ambient noise, the children, children laughing, the cars driving, the birds chirping. There's construction.
Think you should.
Yeah, just just the ambient noise in that area covers around high quarters. So the the pickleball or not necessarily just pickleball, the activity that occurs on that court is what pushes it closer to this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you so much. Thank you for that. I think we have, uh, you may sit down now. I hope we've concluded our questions.
Thank you.
And I know we have a lot of people who wish to speak. And what I think we'll do is we start with those people who are here. Uh, I'm going to open up the public comment now uh for people to speak. And again, you'll have three minutes. Uh, and and we ask that you can just state your name and and it's helpful to know where where to live um for the record. And and perhaps that could be troubleshooting the online issue, or we may take a break. We may just reset for a few minutes, folks, to use the restroom. During that time, but we'll start now with people who are with us. Um, uh, so if anyone likes your first person.
Maybe I should escape the presentation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we.
Commissioner, Commissioner, that's a pleasure.
And we'll ask you to pass the end of the microphone. I just, yeah, and actually it does help to sit down.
She will turn.
Yeah, for real.
Testing, testing.
Perfect.
It's a pleasure indeed to meet all the commissioners. We really admire all of the guests and work to do. Um, and my name is Roger Fortune, and I live, uh, in a resident in fourteen ninety-six Vastazza West Street. And I would like to speak to you this evening on behalf of friends, neighbors, and nearby residents of old St. Hillery's Preserve. And their signed petition that was submitted to the commission yesterday and this morning. The petition is entitled less pickleball noise or gunshot noise, gunshot type noise at the Tiburon Peninsula Club, not more pickleball noise. This petition on behalf of fifty-seven signings is submitted to the Tiburon Plan Commission in opposition to the passage of conditional use permit twenty twenty-three dash two zero one that would permit use of existing sports as pickleball courts at the TPC or Tiburon Peninsula Club. Signing reasons for objecting to the passage of this uh conditional use permit or any amendment to permit pickleball to be played at the TPC are stated in the petition. Some of these reasons are pickleball causes high levels of rapid fire gunshot type noise that eliminates the serenity of old St. Hillery's Preserve for nearby residents, visitors, and family. Disturbing levels of pickleball noise at the TPC this past summer and fall could be heard on trails of the preserve and at many residences near the preserve. This disruption of serenity is not the intention of the majority of Tiburon residents, as evidenced by the recent approval of measuring. The application of this uh for this conditional use permit is petitioned in several respects. It does not include noise placement, which nor interviews for affected residents on Vastazza East to West Streets, like for drive, rent, the corridor, Red Hill Circle, and others. Does not conclude the consensus for its passing, though by either ballot or petition regarding Tiburon residents supported major name. This noise, the noise study provided by the applicant is based on time average noise metric metrics, as Commissioner DeBeaver pointed out, which are not appropriate to measure short period impulsive sounds, a racket, a racket hitting a pickle. Other studies, for example, in the New York Times of June third, twenty twenty-three, note that conventional sound metrics do not quantify a frantic rhythm and the annoying sound of pickleball on a person's wellbeing. In closing, I would like to compliment the commission for your excellent efforts and contributions to the welfare and welfare beauty of Tiburon. The signed petitions are submitted to the Tiburon Plan Commission with the intent to preserve the serenity and the desirability of our beautiful town of Tiburon. These credits are trademarks of Tiburon and may get known worldwide as one of the more beautiful locations in the world to reside. We are hopeful that this opposition information is helpful to the planning commission in your consideration of the application of this conditional use permit. And we hope that's helpful and your determination of what is the most appropriate path forward for our beautiful town of Tiburon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I I have a question for you. Um, what's the 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 um this organization created as for this purpose um to respond to the application?
This this total response, atheist response, it turned out some of us really are annoyed with pickleball noise. We can't go out on our decks in the evening. I could hear it in kitchens. You know, I could hear it in front of our house, you know, on Sunday. And so it's very annoying. And it's not. And we're really concerned about the noise measurements that are being done. That's a time average measurement for a period of several hours. And you can't really, you know, uh, that's not really the noise we're hearing. We're hearing the gunshot, wah wah bam bam, fun noise. If you walk upon the trails, you'll hear that. And it's very disturbing to people above. I'm sure that part of that's having to do with the sound barriers that are being put up are probably reflecting the noise upward into the natural atmosphere. And so uh the response, when we walk down the street with fast people, you know, is this annoying you? People were immediately signing, yes, saying yes. And then turned out we left some uh extra petitions around. People were signing it, bringing it, dropping it off. There's a lot of resentment against pickleball up on the hill, so.
And do you find that it's um, are there times of the year or times of the day when it is more annoying to you? What was your experience just over the course of the day, over the course of a season of?
We can't walk out on our deck, not hear pickle. And it's, you can hear the pickleball even with the nice paddles over tennis. And tennis, you know, everybody, it's more sophisticated for not hitting so many times. And so it's uh much easier to get accustomed to. The pickleball can be very disturbing. And and to answer your question, um, you know, especially if you want to go out, have a glass of wine in the evening and the sun setting or something. It's bam 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 bam, go and take a walk down Vastazza West Trail. You can just, you know, hear, you know, you do that. And so that's the impulsive sound. And the and the time average measurements that they're being provided, I don't think it's likely, when you do research on the internet, you find the impact of the paddle on a paddle on a pickleball can be seventy to eighty dBs, maybe some of the other members like that, some comments on it. But it can be pretty, it it's a, it's a gunshot type noise. It's a little.
So from your perception, your personal experience, if if your experience throughout the days.
So.
Would that be accurate? Would it be accurate to say that in your experience, you're experiencing it throughout the days? All of your wrongs or?
Well, it definitely, papers all, you know, when we're on day off, say, inside or ends earlier. And then the other thing is in the rainy season or something. But when the court's going full steam, it's pretty.
Thank you so much. I I guess Commissioner DeBeaver had much to add.
Which side do you live on? You can see from the map like where those courts are.
Do you love it? If we were breaking one of the slags that the applicant put on.
We can have the.
North, sir, you live north of.
Yeah, we're north, we're north, right straight up the canyon.
Okay, you live right on the edge where the trail.
Yeah, we're we're looking right out over and there's many, rent the court, and there's, you know, several complexes up there. You know, really impacted. So I, you know, I recommend uh to interview the residents and see how they feel about it, because apparently they haven't all been done yet. Playing with this, what a sound, people are pretty disturbed by it. I mean, thank you, thank you. And I appreciate this opportunity. I would, thank you very much.
Hey. Next person? Yes, and feel free to just step up or you can line up with us easier. Actually, lining up is often nice because it has a sense of of, you know, who's here and how much time we know before we turn to the online speakers. Hi.
Well, hi, commissioners. Thank you very much. So my name is Speed Golden. My wife and I live on Princeton Court. Uh, actually, for the TPC Commission Report by Bennett, Klos and Associates, we live at the quote residential noise receptor and quote on Princeton Court. We strongly object to TPC's request to convert two tennis courts into eight pickleball courts. Their report uses many scientific words and names, predictor B two O three O noise modeling software and ISO nine six one three, and algorithm used for calculating the attenuation of sound. The report results are noise average, so the area north of TPC would be subjected to only a average fifty-six decibels, including indoor homes and outdoor decks. Let's talk about averages. The vacuum cleaner can generate seventy decibels. If one repeatedly turns the vacuum cleaner on per minute and off per minute from nine AM to seven thirty PM, the hours of pickleball cooperation as requested by TPC, the average decimal level would be thirty-five. That's somewhere between whispering and quiet library noise. The commission TPC report is both disingenuous and incomplete. Let me paraphrase New York Times article, quote, or paraphrase, most grating destructive sound in the entire athletic ecosystem, maybe the staccato, ha ha ha, emanating from pickleball courts. Pickleball wax, wax can reach seventy decibels. Actually, some articles say hundred. Decimal readings alone are insufficient for conveying the true magnitude of annoyance. Two factors, the high pitch of a cart paddle slamming a plastic ball and the erratic or frantic rhythm of the smacks also contribute to its uncanny ability, uncanny ability to drive high standards crazy. It creates vibrations in a range that can be extremely annoying. The TPC report is silent on both the matter of pitch and the staccato of rapid repetitive wax. TPC proposes trap three millimeter thick a pusta block around these courts, a material which, under the best circumstances, and used indoors has a maximal acoustic performance of twenty decibel reduction. If this product were effective, it would already be used throughout the country, and the pickleball, pickleball noise problem would be resolved. TPC needs to get serious about noise mitigation and reduction. There are professional companies such as Pickleball Sound Mitigation that analyze acoustic environmental settings and offer scientific and scientific thoughtful noise mitigation solutions. We therefore respectfully request that this amendment to the existing TPC conditional use permit be denied and that the unsanctioned conversion of one tennis court into a pickleball court cease and be restored to tennis court use. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for having us, uh, I really appreciate it. My name is Mark Ely, and I live at one court by this for on them. Uh, according to Google Maps, that's two hundred and thirty-eight feet from the pickleball court uh just above Mar West. And uh, I'm very appreciative of the two gentlemen who spoke earlier. Um, I think they brought up some very important points, including the specific nature of the acoustic signals from a rapid, you know, impulse signal that comes from a pickleball. But I'm also particularly curious and and a question about the acoustic work that was done is where were those measurements made? It looks like they were done along Mar West. And of course, the acoustic panels that were set up, uh, sound travels three hundred and sixty degrees. And I'm just worried that that really wasn't taken into consideration any sort of elevation, change in elevation, the resulting signal that would have been captured higher up into where the actual residential areas are that are most affected by the sound. So I'd like to get more detail there as well. That that would be very helpful. Um, I do appreciate that TPC is doing some mitigation effort. Um, I think a lot more uh will be required for the neighborhood to feel like uh this is the minimum position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, do you?
Oh, sorry, question.
Thanks for your call. Do you, um, do you hear the sound from your house on Esperon?
I do continuously.
How how long have you lived there?
Uh, I've lived in Esperon for twelve years and uh and active pandemic with my wife and I work at home, so we're there all day. And I and we hear it, of course, like during the summertime this past summer, um, less than now, but still during working hours. And it is consistent. And I think it's also important, and I'm curious about not just the sound that pickleball makes, but of course, there's a lot of enthusiasm that happens when you've got that many more people crowded on that court. And I wondered if that sort of, if the acoustics uh uh measurement that done, done with sixteen people playing continuously. playing continuously with balls, with a level of enthusiasm we see uh, from pickleball players. Cause that's certainly what we hear, not just the ball, but of course, lots of yelling and screaming, which is fun, but also part of the acoustic signature.
Do you hear tennis and tennis players as well from the playground?
Not nearly as much. Um, I, you know, it's hard to quantify and say it's, it's, it's almost in the dim in the background, we really don't notice tennis that much. Um, it's primarily pickleball because it is such a sharp sound. Uh, it just travels in a different way and it, and it hits a different frequency range than a typical tennis ball does. So you're much more aware of it. It is more like a popper, uh, a shot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Rick Sitchell. I've lived in the Delmar neighborhood. Uh, I've been in Zebraon for eighteen years. I've been a member of TPC for about seventeen of those. Uh, and I'm in support of pickleball. I just want to speak to, I respect the whole noise issue and how TPC is going about mitigating that noise. Uh, but what I'm going to speak about, we do have a beautiful town. We do have a beautiful amount of people here. We have a beautiful club. That club represents a lot of those people. Uh, the people that I see are enthusiastic about the sport. Uh, what I also see is families playing a sport together that they haven't played ever before. I see elderly playing a sport that they no longer used to be able to play and now play. Uh, I see a bunch of different levels from very, very beginner to expert level. What we see is an amazing happiness that happens throughout this pickleball experience at all levels. Uh, and it's incredible to watch and see that as a member, like to see the excitement that people bring. So while I understand the noise issues we have, I do appreciate the mitigation. I do recognize that as a member of the club. Uh, I do think TPC is trying to do as much as they can. But I also really look at the mental health and the personal physical benefits that people are getting out of this. And I think it's absolutely incredible to see a sport like this has changed what this town is seeing and doing and enjoying. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Parker Pringle, uh, I don't live in the neighborhood down there, but uh, I share the concerns of a lot of the residents. Uh, mainly, uh, I'm concerned about compliance with the terms of this permit. And I'd like to know, um, to what extent the commissioners consider the likelihood that the permittee, um, is going to adhere by all the conditions of his permit, faithful. And whether or not that, um, that here's from your decision. Um, for example, um, there was the picture of the guards on the court. Um, now are those guards enforcing the equipment tools? And also the time limits of uh, use of the pickleball courts, that's a question. Then another question would be, how likely is it that that guard is actually going, if he is in charge of that, for example? Is he actually going to be enforcing that against members? Um, and I, I'd like to draw a comparison of between two other, um, two businesses downtown, restaurants, which uh, received additional use permits from the Commission two thousand and nineteen and a whole host of conditions, which basically are not followed at all. And which the town is aware of, the town is not, um, attending to the faithful, um, adherence to these permit conditions. And um, I'd like to issue sort of a warning to the residents around you. You, you may find that if you found pickleball to be a nuisance, I think getting the town to act, um, simply to follow, uh, pretend to the faithful performance of these permit conditions should, may not be compliant, is going to be a, a whole different type of nuisance. And um, I'm curious, um, if you guys can address, um, basically, um, how compliance, uh, would be attended to? How you are expecting that to happen? Um, and in the event that TPC does not comply with the terms, I'm thinking, for example, the seven thirty time limit, probably six months of the year is going to be all, um, uh, uh, time after seven thirty, you could probably play pickleball. Um, how would the residents go about seeking compliance? And how likely is it they'd be able to do it? Who would they be contacting? Um, that sort of thing. I think that might elaze people's fears, if you could instill confidence in them. But like I said, it's two businesses downtown, which um, tell a very different story about the town's willingness, or maybe just capability to um, follow through on the permit conditions, which you guys are spending all this time analyzing and analyzing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, I'd like to partially answer his question.
Uh, you know, I think what I, we don't typically do Q and A as part of this public. So what, but it's a, it's a good point. I think it's something that we certainly discussed as, as in our own deliberation, but I don't want to open the door to a Q and A, etc.
Yeah, we, that's why I should discuss it.
Go on that process, yeah. Um, but we do appreciate anything that's brought to our commission reports. Uh, anyone else here with us? Yes, please feel free to just step up, yeah. You.
I'm referring in notes.
Yeah, it started here.
Yes, my name's Deb Ben Dinnelli. And my husband and I live on Hill Drive in Hawthorne Terrace, in that neighborhood. And I have a different slant on things to present tonight. Hope you'll hear me out and value what I have to say as well. Thank you, Commissioner, for this opportunity. Um, okay. How would you feel to have a pickleball court put up across the street from your front yard? Tonight's meeting is to particularly address TPC's pickleball requests. And because of the popularity of pickleball in general, my comments will hopefully serve a purpose within this forum to have the town take a much closer look at the negative effects of pickleball in all quiet areas in Tiburon. This is our situation. The neighbor has installed his own court. It's less than fifty feet away from our new deck and all of our main living rooms. There isn't a way for us to respond to this intrusion because there don't seem to be regulations in Tiburon regarding the installation of a pickleball court in a neighborhood. As a sport growing in popularity, this concerns me. These particular neighbors can play anytime, day or night, if they so choose. As you know, the sound of the ball when it hits the panel each time can have a very sharp popping sound that is packed with a punch, very unlike the much softer sound of a tennis ball. I know there are regulations around sound levels in the Tiburon General Plan Noise Guidance. In a residential neighborhood, in this situation, levels are required to be at the lowest level, so so-called green zone. I'm confident that the contact sound of a pickleball noted it, some, in some studies at ninety decibels, is in the two highest noise zones for Tiburon, red and gray, which are two and three levels above where it should be for residential. Tiburon needs to be fair to its residents who are present every day, who live here for years, we've lived here thirty in our current home. Would any of you, like a neighbor that suddenly had a pickleball court in your front yards? What would you do about it? What should Tiburon do about regulating the installation of these in the first place? And then once installed, addressing the noise ordinance issues around the court? So I urge the planning commission and eventually town councilor us to carefully consider their decisions around allowing these courts to be installed in a residential area. And just as importantly, enforcing the noise ordinance that will likely need to follow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Hi, everyone, I'm Jeff Levickian, I'm a member of the TPC. I live off of Reed Ranch Road. And first off, I would just want to say thank you, Deb. You are one of the greatest teachers in our community, so I have the highest admiration for you. Beyond, uh, you know, beyond belief, so thank you. Um, I just wanted to say TPC's been around for fifty years. Um, it's kind of the de facto, um, community club. Most of the members are members or live here on the peninsula. Um, L Valley has a, you know, a club, a public club. Most communities do, Tiburon does not. We are trying to promote a phenomenal sport, I think Rick spoke to it. Pickleball's created so much fun and joy for people. I'm a lifelong tennis player. Like me, many people are picking up, going beyond tennis and playing pickleball. And it's, it's almost an extension of tennis. And it's this phenomenon that's brought so much joy to people. And I think the TPC has been very thoughtful in its approach to try to mitigate the sound. There is sound, let's face it, we all know there is. Um, but the acoustic fence is fantastic. It's an amazing tool. And the reason why you don't see it in other communities is because it's very expensive. And TPC has taken the steps and made the investment to put this up. And all you need to do is go stand on the other side of the fence and it's magical how much it blocks the sound. And the TPC isn't within compliance without the acoustic fence. And they're well within compliance with the acoustic fence. If anything, there's an opportunity to use more of it in the future and add more courts. So I think, you know, allowing the community to have a wonderful sport that's contained in one place, serves the residents of this, this town. Certainly, we wouldn't want pickleball courts in everyone's neighborhood, to Deb's point. But TPC has been very thoughtful and made investments. Um, the one thing I will say, um, beyond this is the great thing about additional courts is it creates open play. Open play brings out more people to play. It gives them an opportunity to go down and play with their friends and peers without setting up a match. And that's very unique to pickleball. Tennis and golf, basketball, baseball, you have to set things up and make appointments, bring other friends out. But with pickleball, most of the play is with open play, but you have to have multiple courts to, uh, excuse me, to accommodate everyone. So, um, I want to thank everyone for their thoughtfulness. It's been a long road. It's a phenomenal sport that's brought a lot of joy. I hope you all understand that TPC is, you know, kind of that place in town that services our local community.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the audience? Okay, it looks like there's no one else here who wishes to speak. So we'll hopefully resolve the online, the Zoom issue and we're able to allow people who are waiting in the Zoom room to comment as well.
Chair, I have one hand raised. I'm going to turn on the audio for David Grokenberger.
Okay. Uh, David, are you able to hear us and to speak?
Yes, thank you. My name is David Grokenberger. Uh, I reside.
I'm not hearing you, so.
Well, let's. See what I can.
Fair, a way to unmute yourself by.
All right, do you hear me now? It says I'm not, I'm not muted.
If I unmute my computer, it's going to make.
Apparently people on who are calling and can hear the speaker. A little weirdized here, not able to hear, so maybe something like the audio.
I can try it, but it might make an awful sound.
We, we, we can try to, uh, bring it across by unmuting, but it could have an echo.
Feedback.
Yeah, we might get some feedback. Um, we do want to note that the agenda does say that the Zoom, if you use Zoom, it's at your risk, your own risk. So these things can happen. Uh, we haven't had this happen before, but I know.
No, we definitely use Zoom quite a lot and we've had.
I've never had this problem before, but we didn't have Zoom at five o'clock this afternoon. So we're trying to put it together. It's been a bad afternoon on this one, so.
Uh, do you want to try to unmute? With the warning that maybe turn the volume.
We'll try, we'll try to unmute and see what happens if you give us a moment.
Okay.
So is there where you can chat feature? Or some of our questions can be submitted by chat?
Oh.
What?
We don't do that.
No. We don't actually do that, we don't have that capability.
Are you able to hear me?
Is it possible for someone to email again the question?
I can get it on my phone.
Probably call them on their cell.
And we can try what we did before.
Yeah, we usually, yeah, we usually just, you know, we don't do the email or the call in anymore since we no longer are on a remote system. We're all on together, so let, let, give me one moment.
And you know, what I like to is just allow for a few minutes and if, just take a recess for about five minutes and people can use it.
Okay, we have them on.
David is calling through his cell phone.
I'm Matt.
Can we reset?
Matt, I'm, I'm calling because I can't. They can't hear me, but I, I would just give you.
We have them on the phone. And if there's only one person that, that raised her hand, then.
Well, but we do have seven other people online. And so once, sometimes they do come up. I just would like a five minute break for us to see.
Stop talking, let's not, uh, let's let staff try to resolve this.
Even I think there are. We're going to take a little minute break.
Yeah, well, here's what I thought. Give you my three or four points, okay? That's. Yeah.
He is going out and back in, but I don't know that.
I would introduce myself as being, um, father of seven children, thirteen grandchildren, all focused on tennis. I've played for two plus years. And I see very little distinction between tennis and between pickleball. And I've competed at the national level with my rankings and national. So I'm a player from that perspective.
I know, I don't know what's going on.
Second point is that.
At all.
Of course, does not, every hour does not equal every game. And in order to equal this description of a gunshot. We have things called deep.
Let's say, for example.
Do you want to try calling in?
Yeah, I think that's a good one. And so, um, and if, if there are only seven people that are there, then you would want to.
We had people identify themselves as players. They just said.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, you can be the last one. I can, I can turn back to the. Yeah, but you indicate that, you know.
Yeah, the webinar idea.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah. An ideal world, it's enjoyable. Is it in an ideal world, it's enjoyable? He said, we enjoy listening.
I just got in.
Sweet talking over here during the break. You're muted.
No, right there.
Yeah.
And now it's Sasp me.
I feel so odd. I kind of blinded it.
That's muted. I'm muted.
I'm, I'm having, um, an issue with sites.
Okay, can you hear me now?
It's almost like I'm blinded and I look at the sun.
I'm talking. Hello, hello.
Connect me, but that's what I want.
Oh, I don't, I'm just hearing.
There was a diversity.
Yeah, I'm not getting anything.
Can you hear me?
There's nothing more frustrating than trying to. So stressful.
Maybe I just tried calling and I turned the volume up on this.
Yeah, I just. I just called in, but it's not giving me anything.
Press the button. But I think it was because that guy went on the call.
And then I didn't get on. I just called into the Zoom.
Yeah, I think what we do is I'll ask everyone to raise their hand if they wish to speak. We'll see how many. I actually think it was fairly effective to go through the cloud. So I think given that we only have seven, at most seven, I think we'll do it that way. Oh, great. So, okay, so we're going to do, we're going to do it via phone. If people can, if it calls. And who do they, what? And who do they call? Who are they supposed?
Well, they, well, they call, well, this guy called that.
But if there's.
Yeah, well, I don't have.
Why not, why not? And we just, can we just put your number in the chat?
Back to call or how we should we have them call them? Call someone they know who's here. I mean, I. I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to, I'm happy to share myself with everybody. So where is? Where is chat on here? I don't think that it, I remember. Thank you all so much for allowing us to take a break. We'll, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Collect ourselves here and start up. We do have, so we were unable to resolve the technical issue. We do have people on Zoom who wish to speak. We know we have two people with hands raised. We'd appreciate actually if everyone who wishes to speak who's on Zoom could raise their hand. I'm actually going to give out my cell phone number. And I'm going to offer that the people who wish to speak, they can call my cell phone number. And, and I will just use the cell and the microphone to allow everyone and, and the recording to hear.
I would just like to just, you know, the agenda sort of, it gives us three ways to submit public comment. One is by email before twelve PM. One is in council chambers and one is on Zoom. And then, you know, we have the line that if we have technical difficulties, the planning commission meeting has to continue. So this is not one of the ways that public comment can be submitted. And it is unfortunate, but I just want it clear that in the agenda, it says there are three ways to submit public comment. And doing so on Zoom is just a risk that you take. So you have, you know, you have options of whether you want to move.
Okay, so we are being advised that the way I have offered is actually not a legitimate way to receive public comment. There were other ways available to people. And, you know, if people live nearby, they can come down and submit public comment personally. I think there may be one person in the room who wishes to, who may wish to speak potentially. Yes. Well, we, 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 we had, we've sort of, don't have. What has been presented and available to people? Yeah.
Great. So thank you. Yeah. Bob Austrian, we've lived in Tiburon since nineteen ninety-six. We've been members of TPC since then. And I was on the board when we were in front of you in two thousand and four, five, six, when we rebuilt the club. So I wanted to echo that TPC is our community. So it's wonderful to join you in our community in evaluating how best to evolve as a singular group. There's no, we're, we're local or we live down the road or something. So it's a, it's a unique, as Jeff Kabikiyan said, you know, we are, we are ruling ourselves and in this venue. And it's, it's quite distinctive then from, you know, I live on this block and what we want to do here or there. Next would be that it seemed to me as a non-engineer that, you know, there are a set of rules and there's a staff report and how you measure sound. And rather than litigate whether it was done right or wrong, you know, there, there are guidelines and it seems to me that, you know, we're coloring inside the lines with the request. You know, we're inside of the envelope of how one measures this particular restriction on how noisy things are. And, you know, unless there's something flawed in the staff report, you know, this is a green light kind of outcome as far as I, I can tell. And respectfully disagree with anyone who wants to challenge it. It either is or isn't the staff's professional view that we're compliant in this request. Next would just be about evolving our community, you know? Yes, there are, there are issues with noise and smell and sights and views. And we've evolved since we widened the road, since we built this building, since the library was expanded, since a traffic light was put in, since the school was expanded, all of them. Since the population of school age children tripled in the last twenty-five years. We've, with your help, you know, managed the natural challenge of what's okay and how we evolve as a community. And I think as many of us, as many of the speakers said, while, while growth and evolution in the town does impact some of the neighbors differently, you know, we're growing very, very well, very, very well. And I feel like it's important to just put this request in context. TPC was a baseball field in the fifties. The report of bats hitting soft and hardballs was what it was. Then there was one pool. Then there were three. Then there were eight courts. Then there were twelve. Then there were sixteen. Then the building size was tripled. Then a fitness center was added in nineteen ninety-four. You know, all these things have happened and at, and at each waypoint, I'm sure there were challenges. And this one coloring within the lines seems to me relatively modest in the great scope of what our community center or proxy community center ought to be allowed to do. So I just wanted to try to frame it that way and hope for your approval of this important, but relatively minor request in the evolution of how our community operates itself as one. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Public commentary is still open, so please feel free to step forward.
Hi, I'm speaking kind of spontaneously because I'm confused. My name is Judy Schulman and I'm a resident of fourteen ninety-six Destazo West Street in Tiburon. I, I hear everybody referring to TPC as a community center. I have never heard of a community center that you have to pay quite a steep fee to get into and there's a long waiting list. It doesn't, Sam doesn't ring true that it's a community center. It may serve the community in certain ways, but I don't think we should refer to this as a community center. I think it, it clouds the issue. Okay. And I, again, I am on the side of really looking at what this, what the pickleball is doing, not just to the other side of the fence that they have built, but to all of the people who live up the hill for whom they did not do a study. And we are terribly troubled by it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone? If there, if there's no one else who wishes to comment, then the applicant has five minutes to address comments, to, to, to reply or clarify information. So we'll let you get settled and they're all.
Right. First rebuttal.
Your clock.
Okay, great. So I, I assume the purpose of a rebuttal is to just address some of the, the good points that were brought up. So I'll start with that last one. And, and TPC is not a community center. However, we do serve twenty percent of the community. There's an argument that maybe another community center gets built someday, something like that. I'm all supportive of that because there is a very high demand for the activities that we offer our twenty percent share of the community. Excuse me. I apologize. I don't have the last names of the people, but the, one of the first speakers, Roger. I, you know, liking a pickleball to a gunshot of, again, I'm not a sound engineer, but our sound engineer did measure, you know, ambient noise in the high forties and then peak noise, not average, but peak noises in the low sixties. I just looked up on the internet, which is a very dangerous place to be. But gun, gunshots are actually, a Red Ryder BB gun is closer to the ninety-seven. You know, a, and then this is kind of interesting. And this is what, when my, my researcher over there actually scared me a little bit. If we don't allow constructive uses that are within the standards that we've set forth, where does this end? I live in Del Mar. A softball bat is over a hundred decibels. So I've never thought about complaining about that. Those are just kind of the songs of Del Mar. And, but if this happens, and I apologize for any softball players, that is not my intent. I'm just strictly making a point about the concern of what's the line if we're not going to work with, within the framework that we've set up? There is enthusiasm. It is, it is a very fun sport. I absolutely agree with that. One of the things I just wanted to note that this three years has been during the, you know, the coming out of COVID. So our club was heavily used because it was our safe place. It was the place that people could go. So there was just in general a high use of the club. The other point I wanted to make is during the peak pickleball times, it also happens to be the peak times for children's lessons. And all the tennis courts are taken for children's lessons. So, you know, some of the, the, the decibel level that takes us from forty-eight, as a not a sound engineer, but I've got to assume that enthusiasm also comes out in the children's tennis lesson. So another dangerous thing to, that would, you know, be, would be very painful to take away. I'll let Lucas address Mr. Brindles about the guard. I think it'd be better to address that. And then I just have one, one final point on within my rebuttals. You know, we're, it seems like there's a, a concern or a question about trying to get to what is this peak noise? And how often does it hit? The, one of the, you know, pickleball experts at our club has been playing tennis for sixty years, accomplished tennis player. And he, he has converted completely to pickleball because not too many people can play tennis for sixty years. But when I was talking to him about it, he was saying that as you get better at the sport, there's actually less of the hard hit. Because if you watch the game, the real skilled players, they're dinking it over and they're back and forth and back and forth and setting people up for, for the, the, the larger hit. So I'd encourage you to watch pickleball and you'll see that it's, it's not just a, you know, bashing the ball back and forth. It's a very elegant game and, and that the, those soft hits do not generate as many decibels. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know you've reserved some time for, for Lucas. Minute, one minute.
Thank you so much. So I should be quick. I'm just going to address a few questions at the beginning and where do we get the sound engineer from? We actually reach out to sort of, his gentleman name is Bob Unitich, who's like a sort of a godfather of noise mitigation for pickleball from the East Coast. And he's the one who recommended this particular company to work with because they're professional and pickleball studies many, many times in many different places. So that's where we got it from. I wanted to mention that the staff member present at the booth is checking equipment and timeframes for every single person. And they're not afraid to tell members that it's over when it comes to their reservation. And they would absolutely kick them out and they have done it before. They continue to do it all the time. In addition to that, when it comes to follow up on potential approval, we obviously have cameras on every single court and, and we do not allow a presence beyond what, what compliant is. So we want to be a member of our neighborhood and member of our community and be transparent with our approach and with our execution. We also want to reasonably accommodate everybody who lives around us. That is the reason why we invested so much into mitigation processes before this, this meeting today. And what I really.
I asked you to wrap it up because you're over time.
Sure, sure.
I have a question for you.
For sure. And I just want to make sure that obviously we're not setting a standard of how we measure particular sound. I don't think it's really about that. We, we are within the guidelines that are presented to us as something that requires us to be provided, meaning this is how we measure whether it's impacting this is.
We did hear that.
Right. Yeah, and that's, and we want to be a partner to the community. We're here and we'll do whatever is necessary to make it work and make it the best it can be for our neighborhood. So I just want you to know that.
I have a question for you on, on the mitigation. It was a question that I had intended to ask during your presentation and I, I just, it escaped me and you reminded me is to the extent you've considered additional mitigation, mitigation, you have made, you have made measures, significant measures, what in your mind would be available to you as additional mitigation? Or what have you considered, if anything?
So obviously we did everything that we could do when it comes to technology that was available to us. However, you know, one of the, one of the walls of our court sports is, is still not covered with acoustic fence. And that's something that we would consider doing if we are able to keep pickleball and continue to play it. It's, it's a very important amenity for our club and for our members. And again, we want to do everything that's possible within our capability.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, thank you so much.
Correct.
Yeah. So that's what you've considered at this time.
Yeah. That's the best approach, I would say. We want to mitigate the noise to the best possible capacity with the latest technologies that are available for us.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing now and we'll return to the commission so that we can deliberate, consider the issue, talk among, and then deliberate as a commission. And typically I like to start with my, not start myself, but start with other commissioners. I, I've been starting over here, so I think I'm going to turn to you, Commissioner Si, surprise. If you'd like to.
I'm happy to start. Happy to start. Yeah, it's, it's been great hearing the, the comments from members of the public and, and, and listening to and, and watching the report from the sound engineer. And I appreciate the club and the presentation that the club has done. In addition to the members of the public on both sides who've made comments. You know, sitting on this commission for a few years, one of the things that we often see on issues that have two sides to them is a frequent reference to Tiburon as a village. And this idea of how to maintain, and a lot of y'all have heard this, right? Maintain the character of the town. And then there's always a discussion, as there should be, about how we do that in a way that both promotes growth, but does so in a responsible way, right? This is actually not a controversial point. Where it becomes controversial is when it becomes things that are at our doorstep. I think there was a resident who spoke about literally that issue and, and her, at her doorstep. In an issue like this, I think that one of the things for me as a commissioner, whether it is a, an issue related to longer hours for a restaurant or it could be pickleball at a club like a TPC, it, it really becomes a question of, one, how the entity that we're talking about fits into the character of the immediate environment. And number two, the people themselves who are running that entity, what are they trying to do? What are they trying not to do? And what does the future look like? I think there was someone else who actually said, how does this work? How do we make sure this actually stays in compliance? All legitimate issues. It's using those, that the twin pillars of those two ideas is where I come down on this. And as I look at an issue like this, one of the things that becomes increasingly clear to me is that pickleball is clearly a game that people enjoy. There's not really too much of a debate about that. And, and to see that at a club like TPC, which is increasingly on, on, you can see it on a daily level. You could hear it in the report, is, is trying to do so in a thoughtful, responsible way. It, it, it says to me ultimately that what we're trying to do is address that issue of how we can maintain a, a, a village-like. A a a village-like um, atmosphere while promoting growth and evolution. But doing so in a thoughtful way. What I have been persuaded by today is that TPC is doing so in a responsible way. That they're doing so thoughtfully, trying to address a lot of important issues that incorporate, as opposed to reject. A lot of the considerations um, of the neighbors. TPC is not going away, nor is the restaurant down the street, nor should that be the effort, at least from my own perspective. What we should be trying to do, but instead trying to make sure that we're balancing a lot of those important interests. And in this particular case, the evidence that we have from the sound report and I, and from what I can tell, there's only one. There's not uh, a competing one out there, is that the sound levels um, are consistently below. What we otherwise see on things like tennis courts, uh, garbage trucks, children in the streets and combination of of all of these things. That to me, I think is meaningful. That doesn't mean the sound's not there. It it's clearly there and whether it was five or fifty-five residents who were um, uh, speaking tonight. It's still meaningful, the fact that of course the sound is still there. So for me, what is, what is the most persuasive is that there are um, obvious efforts. Underway by uh, TPC to address the issue of sound. This is not an issue of TPC saying, from what I have seen from the evidence today. That TPC has denied that there's sound. There's sound that comes from tennis rackets too. There's sound from water polo. There's sound from lots of children. Um, in the back of TPC, playing on the playground structure. The question is, are they doing things responsibly? And what I've seen is in the, what we've seen in the evidence here, the mitigation efforts. Um, that are underway and that includes also issues of ours, um, I think are so, are are reasonable. I I personally don't find this to be much of a close call, because I think that what. What um, we're talking about with pickleball is very consistent with what TPC does in terms of its core mission. But it's a, it's a tennis and swim club. Pickleball is a very easy extension to the game. Um, and and I think that what the folks have put together here is is a good, responsible plan. That clearly, from what I can tell, provides flex for additional mitigation efforts um, at times go, as times go by. So I'm gonna vote in favor of the amendment to um, uh, the the CUP. I encourage my other commissioners to do so as well and to think about in this particular context. The work, this is not one where perfect should be the enemy of good. This is not an issue of should we have no sound and avoid, or should we have uh, pickleball sound? This is one in which this entity exists, tennis is played, swimming occurs. Pickleball is a growing sport, one that is very co-extensive with tennis. Uh, and I think it makes sense to approve the amendment.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Si. And actually, it's something that you said, it it reminds me to go back to. Um, the factors that we're actually required to look at, uh, when we consider these could, these um, conditional use permits. Under the um, zoning ordinance. And so Commissioner Si addressed a a couple of those. Um, and I'm just, just reminding us all as we're talking through this to, you know, have those in front of us. Uh, Commissioner De Fever.
Um, yeah, so I generally agree with some of the things Commissioner Si said, particularly the balancing act that we are tasked with in front of us. Uh, I have a hard time knowing where to start. Um. I I need to ask a difficult question of my fellow commissioners, actually. I am not a member of the TPC or any of us a member of the TPC, because I thought we had conflicts before, didn't we?
Yeah, yes, I'm a member of TPC, but no, there's no conflict. This is something I've referred to um, our legal counsel.
Okay.
And the, the inquiry is whether or not there is a financial interest that a commissioner has.
Okay.
There is no financial interest that.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't want that to bother me later. So I, with all due respect, I respect you tremendously as a commissioner. I wanted to make sure that we were being completely transparent, because I thought that you had recused yourself previously. And so that was bothering me and I wanted to make sure that we went through the steps.
Yeah, I I had recused myself previously, but the reality is, and confirmed with legal counsel, there is no issue. Much like you probably attended um, some of the restaurants of which.
Yeah, yeah. I think you would recuse yourself previously of abundance of, overabundance of caution, but that was, I didn't want that to nag at me. So I want, I'm so sorry to put you on the spot.
No apology necessary.
No, it's a, it's a good clarification that did come up in conversation at the start of the uh, prior to the meeting. So it's, it's good to clarify for the public.
I want to make sure the public feels comfortable.
Our minutes that closely.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And I apologize, but I, of course, I don't want the public to feel like they're not being heard properly. And we didn't follow procedure. So thank you for that, Commissioner Si. Uh, it was gonna nag at me.
No problem.
Um, and if anyone had a question about that, we do have procedures we have to follow. And I just wasn't a part of that conversation for the meetings. I did not know. Um, yes, uh, I I agree that this seems like a small addition to uh, the already permitted uses. But I think I need to clarify something with staff, if I may. There was not previously a permit for pickleball at all, correct? It's not in any CUP.
It it wouldn't be in the C- the CUP, no. Um, pickleball was not a sport that was played at the time um, the last CUP was done.
Okay, so really, it's, it's an application for all of the pickleball, not just the additional courts.
Not sure I understand that question. There's only pickleball at that one court at this time, and that would be what this amendment would be for.
Well, if pickleball hasn't been approved previously. How are we, why do we, I I I'm not following the logic. Why do we need permission for two additional courts if they didn't need permission for the previous four?
No, it's for an amendment to the existing CUP to include pickleball.
So really, it's to include all of the pickleball then, it's not just the.
Well, it's to include pickleball, but specifically in the, the court they identified.
Correct.
Which, which is the, the, the southernmost court.
The one that was shown on the map.
Yeah.
I understand that from what I'm reading, but if we didn't previously approve the current pickleball.
They've been operating without a use permit, if that's what you're asking. They've been operating without the use permit for this particular activity. That is correct. So there is no, there is no uh, listing within the existing use permit, which is pretty specific for the TPC, I might add. And I, I included that as an exhibit for your staff report, just so you could see what. Sort of the different iterations that we've gone through throughout the years. And pickleball was not listed as one of those, hence they need an amendment to this to continue to play.
By by way of example, precedentally, it's similar to the CUP that we looked at. For someone to to maintain bees on his property.
Okay, yeah, that, that's a great example.
Or, or, or perhaps many cows on one's property. There was a CUP to implement as well.
That's a great example. Thank you for that. That actually clarifies a lot. No, because I know that there's room, there's space for um. Permitted uh, usages to be permitted until they trigger this kind of hearing. Yes.
So, yes, that is correct.
Okay, just checking. I'm making sure I'm understanding this completely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very much.
Semantically, it gets complicated too, because we're talking about what we think of as a tennis court that's being sort of converted into multiple pickleball courts. But but the current request is for the current, currently occurring use. To be, to conform, for the CUP to conform with what is currently taking place. Which is, as I understand it, one tennis court, multiple pickleball courts.
Well, and to Commissioner William, Chair Williams' point, we have to back up and look at what are the criteria that we're actually looking at here. Because we, we get a little lost sometimes and have to refer back. So the criteria that we have delineated for us come from section sixteen dash fifty-two point oh four oh. Uh, sections B and D are the most relevant. And despite how we feel about, about any of the factors, we always, as the planning commission, have to refer back to these. So, and I'm just gonna, you know, please, if I, if you feel I skipped something, I think the most important one here is. That we have to consider the protection of the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the town. Or any probability of injury to property or improvements in the vicinity and zoning district in which the real property is located. And I think this falls under, I would venture, you know, public interest, of course. And we're hearing from the public from both sides, whether they're TPC members or not. Um, I would say health would be one, because you know, repeated exposure to noise levels that are not in line with our ordinance. Could impact health and and welfare, you know, I think, I think would lump also into health. It kind of dovetail with each other. Um, generally, you know, an additional usage, particularly since this is a, a small addition to the courts. That we already have seen being um, used. A small addition is not in and of itself a big deal, quote unquote. But um, we've had issues in the past where sometimes there's a creep in a direction. So we have to stop and think about, okay, well, you know, death by a thousand cuts is still death by a thousand cuts. You have to carefully look at, well, how many times did we approve increase in noise or light? Uh, and look at the history of it. And I appreciate the persons who spoke about the history and how things have evolved in the neighborhood at the TPC. And I'm very sensitive to that, uh, to to that larger picture. Uh, all that being said, my remaining issue um. Is that I don't feel very comfortable making a decision on this, not knowing what it's really like. I wish I'd had the opportunity to visit someone's home, for example, um. That I didn't have enough time to do that. We weren't um, directed in any way, although I'll take that on myself. Uh, to actually go listen to it, especially particularly like the gentleman who lives uh, and works in his home and hears it constantly. It's really hard to get a sense of what that's like from seeing the sound report. Uh, partially because it's averages, but also because it's just different to go and listen to it and understand. I don't feel like I understand how much this might be impacting the local residents uh, health and welfare. I just don't feel comfortable making the decision without actually knowing what that's like, uh, given what I know about sound engineering. Uh, and how it can be pretty imprecise. I feel like I'd like more information. That's where I am at the moment. I'd, I'd like to visit some places and I'd, I'd like to understand a little better about the, the sound wall that the TPC has installed. And I give them huge kudos for doing that. That's really great. And I want to mention that when I went to visit the TPC. You, I didn't notice the pickleball at all from the parking lot. But that's, that's different from where the sound might travel, you know, up the hill. What does it sound like in different places in that bowl, in that amphitheater bowl? I don't feel comfortable that I know that that's not, uh, that's not disturbing the health and welfare of the persons who came out to speak. So that's where I am with it. I'd like more information before we just approve a hundred percent on everything. That's, that's where I am.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Commissioner Amir.
Sure. So uh, I have a question to staff um, from um. Since we, since TPC had the new COP of two thousand nineteen. Um, outside the, I don't know, five to eight complaints that you had on the pickleball stuff, was there anything else? Over the years? I mean, you haven't been here always since then.
I've been here four years now, so you know, feeling like a veteran. Um, but uh, I don't receive complaints about T, uh, that's not true. I've received a few phone calls after a weekend event that was at the TPC for noise. But that was usually a permitted event and they're allowed to have a certain number of those events a year.
Yep.
And my understanding is when um, the TPC was um, contacted by, I believe, PD. On that, that they immediately responded, doors were closed, music was shut off. Um, and it, I think it was a half an hour after when they were supposed to. I, I don't know those exact hours. But otherwise, I don't really receive complaints about um, operations at TPC.
Okay, yeah, the reason I asked that question is because there was a comment here by one of the uh. Uh, one of the people about compliance, uh, et cetera. And um, you know, this is just for the record, I mean, you know, TPC has been compliant. Uh, and if they're, if they wouldn't have been, um, there's many residents who would have come up, you know, to complain. Um, so um, so I, so I guess where I stand here is uh. You know, so if I look back at like, so my myself and some of our fellow commissioners were, were back here in two thousand nineteen. When you were, when the uh, when the uh, when the applicant was looking to put lights in the tennis courts. And um, and that was uh, you know, that was a long, lengthy discussions. Um, and eventually I came out, you know, on the side of the uh, of the neighbors. Um, largely because I thought that there was a big, a big potential negative factor of putting lights. Um, that uh, would have impacted many of the neighbors. Uh, and the evidence was not clear that uh, there was a way to mitigate that. Um, but when I look at this situation, um, first of all, it's, it's hard for me to ignore the fact that pickleball. Um, has actually been played at TPC for three years already. Um, regardless how that happened, you know, that, that's not the point. But objectively, five to eight complaints over, you know, a three-year period. Um, doesn't seem to me that, that much. And I'm not trying to negatively, um, you know, negatively um. Uh, think of any resident who this bothers. I, I fully respect that. Um, so uh, the fact that fifty-seven residents signed now. When the applicant is actually coming to uh, do the right thing and actually get approval for it. I somewhat discount that, because those fifty-seven residents had three years to voice their concerns to TPC. To voice their concerns to, to the town. And the fact that they didn't. Leads to me more that this is a situation of more like not in my backyard situation. Then this is like really something that is extremely bothering me on a daily basis. Um, and and the, and at the end, I think, look, we. In the lighting situation, you know, four years ago, um, the studies showed that there was a light impact. And there was a negative uh, impact on, on the neighbors. Um, here, again, we have a study and this time it's an acoustic study. And actually, look, we can debate um, about peak noise or average noise. But this is a, you know, this is a approved vendor who uh, who's done pickleballs in the country. This is how it's measured. And the average or even the peak number is still below seventy. And and from, and and objectively, from a scientific perspective, I need to look that and say. Okay, you know, we can't ignore the fact that there was acoustic study done. And there, and there isn't um, uh, and that doesn't fall um, above seventy, right? Um, and then finally, um, I guess when I look at what we need to, um. When we need to look at in terms of um, approving uh, zone ordinance, et cetera. I do agree that, you know, the maybe the, the stickiest point is what my uh, fellow commissioner. The Fever mentioned about, you know, about public interest around health and safety. Uh, um, but you know, I just, I just don't see this as, as something that is not compliant with our ordinance. You know, so I would um, I would, I would support, um, I would support the, the applicant's request.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, well, uh, first of all, I think, I just wanted to thank everyone uh, for the comments this evening. It's very difficult to speak, especially when there are sort of two, uh, you know, uh, different perspectives. Um, but it's, it's always incredibly important and and for us to hear um, all perspectives. Uh, and so I just wanted to thank everyone and and acknowledge um. Uh, and I did want to acknowledge as well what um, the, the presentation that we um, heard tonight. Um, and the measures that have been uh, uh, taken um, to address this issue. Um, it's, it, it's, you know, this is a, a very difficult one, because there is no right and there is no wrong in some ways. Um, uh, uh, there are just two sides, two different perspectives. Um, so I always do look to um, the, the uh. The, the guidelines that we have um, that are before us and it's, they exist in the general plan, the Tiburon general plan. And in the zoning um, ordinance. Um, and of course, you know, we do also have the benefit of um, the, the time that the staff has spent reviewing um, an issue. Uh, and as I look through these variables, and I'm just kind of gonna go through them. Um, not in, in depth, but you know, I think the, 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 um, the first one is how does this um, uh, this. Uh, lo- the location, um, the TPC. Uh, what is the relationship to, you know, the, to the area? Um, and I think that relationship, this is sort of what Commissioner. Um, and I think that relationship, this is sort of what Commissioner Si was alluding to, was established a long time ago. Um, it is to provide these recreational activities. Um, it has existed before many of the, I think, before most of the homes existed. Um, and it, you know, it does fit, um, it does serve a certain purpose within the community. Um, and it has for a very long time. So that that's just looking at one, one sort of factor that we're to look at. Um, how has this uh 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 um uh you know, how have these courts been used? How has the facility been used? Um, and is it uh, is the, is the um eh, this kind of use that's being proposed, is it consistent with that facility, with that location? Um, uh, there's a another factor that will it impair, uh, is it an will there be an impairment to architectural integrity? Um, and and to the character of the location, I think that one is is pretty straightforward. Um, because there's really no change in any architectural component of the facility. And then, um, you know, is there a need? So I think the two factors that are most relevant here is is protecting public health, interest, health, safety, convenience, welfare for the town. Um, and that's a, that is often the one that we look to. Um, that is eh eh the most at play um i- in a situation like this. And I think it's really important to um, you know, recognize that that is, uh, we have to think about the entire town overall. Um, and 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 so it's a, it's a, it's a larger question for us to really consider. Uh, and and we do need to hear from people. It is really important and 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 we need to um understand, you know, what are the guidelines that uh, what are the um uh, standards by which we're supposed to assess a a a an application? Um, and then what is the impact to people throughout the town? It sometimes it comes like there's sort of a utilitarian kind of a analysis, you know? How many people are impacted, good or bad? You know, we have to make really difficult decisions because we obviously cannot talk to everybody and understand the complete impact. Um, and so this is what I'm sort of struggling with. Um. And I I do, I am, I am, I I just, you know. I I I think that there is a lot of uh, a lot of people who are enjoying this use, who are benefiting from this use. Um, there are multi-generational, you know, um, uh, benefits to it. There are um, benefits to the elderly. Many people throughout their lifetime can play, play this, this sport of pickleball. And I think that is something that T P C has indicated they are seeing. Um, and it's something that they obviously feel, um, they, you know, have pursued and wish to pursue because it's beneficial um, to uh their business, um, and will allow them to provide more uh benefits to to the community. So I don't doubt uh that motive. I think that um, T P C is doing what they think they 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 need to do um to cer- to better serve the town. Um, I also am really compelled, I find the fact that we have an ordinance, a noise ordinance that establishes our sort of upper limits for different types of uh sounds. Um, I can't, I I'm I'm not inclined to just ignore those standards. Those are standards that have been set. Um, and they are, they are guidelines for us to look at. Um, and you know, there is, uh, as Commissioner Si and Commissioner Amir pointed out, there is a study by a reputable um company that has demonstrated that on average, um the 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 pickleball uses within i- is is below um, the allowable um decibel level. Um, uh, and so I, you know, that, those are compelling facts for me because I can't just jettison that evidence. Um, and say, well, I think here with the example of T P C, we should, we should just apply a different standard, not one that's stated anywhere. Not one that's in the zoning ordinance, just one that we kind of feel is right. I just don't think that's a really good way to um make land use decisions. Um, uh, now, you know, again, we do get to look at how, what is the impact on the community? It's a very, very important consideration. So um I, you know, that's something we have to really grapple with. The the one area of concern that I have is this issue that Commissioner De Fever brought up, which is the 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 a number of times that the noise spikes um, above a certain level. I have, it's been represented that it never spikes above seventy. It's always below seventy. Which is still, as I understand it, kind of within um, uh, below the standards that we've set for for that that particular location, that that type of of facility. Um, but I don't see that in the study. So a a number of things have been said about the study that just don't appear in the study. Um, as far as I can tell, I don't doubt that that data doesn't exist. I just don't have it before me. Um, and um and so I, it's not that I don't, I I don't trust that that's what the study says, but I I would like to see that. Because if for some reason the spike is above seventy um continually, you know, that to me, then I I pay more attention to this factor that um requires us to look at um the 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 uh uh health, safety, welfare of the entire town. Um, I I did visit today. I think most of us had a chance to visit and I do understand I was um while on on the courts, pickleball was certainly louder than tennis. Um, I did find as I, as I um drove around to various neighborhoods around um, the T P C, um, ju- the homes that are just above, um, uh, just above the tennis courts. I could hear, I was actually surprised by how much the pickleball sounded. It was a bit louder, um, and it did more occur more frequently for sure. Um, but there was just a lot of noise coming from the courts. Tennis players were laughing and 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 um as I got farther away um to the apartments and forgive me, I might the name of the uh, the street names are escaping me, but all of the apartments above uh on the hill above, I really didn't hear. I just heard a lot of ambient noise, construction noise, birdsong, traffic. Um, I didn't have a sense that pickleball, but that was my single experience on that one day. Um, uh, uh, but I, but it was helpful uh for sure and a part of my uh, you know, reasoning. Um. But uh, but again, so I am inclined to support this. I do think there should be um, to to the question as to how do we enforce this? Often we build in periods of review. Um, and we can do, certainly do that here. We can do a whatever we think. Sometimes we do a very short period of review, three months, some often we do six months just to make sure. Now here, we've had this use for three years, so we have a sense that, you know, it's not a brand new use. We we kind of know how people reacted to it. Um, and I think that's also a compelling fact. Uh, but we, that's typically how we um uh, you know, the staff will ensure that there's compliance with um, the the various mitigations that have been placed. And we can set a review period to check in and check in with staff and ensure that that has been happening, that they, that that staff has been checking to make sure that there's compliance. We're talking to the community to ensure compliance. I do think there was a period of time that related to the pandemic and maybe related to some big things that the town was uh dealing with. Do redoing the general plan, that that maybe some of those repeat view, it may be time on some other issues, not this one, maybe some of the businesses that were mentioned, for those review periods to occur. And so, you know, I just want to acknowledge that that's something that we also need to think about. Um, but that is how we, uh, those are the the tools that we have um, to check in with everybody to make sure that there's com- there is compliance. So I would definitely like to hear from my fellow commissioners, especially Commissioner Si and Commissioner uh, well, everybody as to whether or not with some um, uh, you know, careful oversight. Um, there's a better way forward.
I'd like to add that from my past experience with sound engineering, and this is no fault of the sound engineers or the T P C in any way, is that the data, it's like statistics, right? Statistics can be easily kind of ushered in certain directions or others with with sound engineering, that is definitely true. Um, and that's why I really don't feel comfortable approving based on what we have because I know that if we get a lot more data, it will be revealing for us in either direction. I I'm not comfortable with the amount of data we have, knowing sound engineering the way that I have from my own past experience. And I would really encourage that we obtain that additional data before we make a decision. Because it could be the case, maybe, maybe not, but it could be the case that the spikes are higher than we think that they are, or that they're more frequent. I mean, if you think about this worst-case scenario, what if the spikes are seventy decibels all day long, every, you know, two minutes? I mean, I don't know. That's probably not true. But we don't know and and I'm not comfortable. I want to see the data to to really understand. I also wouldn't mind uh rereading the noise ordinance because I recall uh, I see that we have the two zones here that are involved in the report, and well, maybe Dina can answer some of this actually. The residential zone, it's not, uh, noises are typically not supposed to be above sixty, particularly not on a repetitive basis. But then we had the other zone, um, that maybe the T P C is in that zone. Well, these zones overlap, so there's also that consideration. I feel like I'm just not comfortable making a decision without digging deeper into our noise ordinances and that sound report.
I think it's important, it is important to check with staff on this because I I do understand, I mean, the one only because the applicant made representation to sort of incorporated some of this data into the presentation. That's the data that I'd be interested in seeing, just just really just to confirm. Um. Uh, but I also don't want to, we 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 don't typically have, you know, we, this is kind of our opportunity to talk to people, to hear from people, to to, you know, and so it's 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 not the typical process to, you know, we'd like to talk to a few more people or we'd like to, that's just not our process. Um. Uh, as ideal as that would be, at some point, we we have to, you know, we do have to make decisions, but uh, I'd love to hear from from the director um as to um here again, going back to what are the typical guidelines when you, when the, when the town staff are reviewing um uh uh these studies and decibel levels and and how, whether or not there's conformance with the noise ordinance. Are you looking at those spikes? Um, and why, why wasn't is it not standard to include that data in into studies?
So so normally we look at sort of a duration of time. So if you hear, you know, one ping, it has to be like a lot of pings during a period of time. It's not just one ping. And so to your point, Commissioner De Fever, we could look at sort of, are there a lot of spikes during an hour period or a thirty-minute or a twenty? I'm not, I'm not a sound engineer. So when I read through that, that's what I kind of look at is what is the duration and what are the receptors? So we're looking at residential around a public facility because that's a public or quasi-public. So I'm really not looking at anything as for how does it impact around? And I looked at um kind of where we were on the gradient and the scale um for these sound studies. Um, and they do keep the meters on for a long time. So there, there is an averaging that does occur because you obviously wouldn't take each data point and provide that to you to you. Um, so I'm, I I'm not a noise engineer. I'm not a noise expert, but that's how we as staff look at it, read the whole report. We look at kind of duration. We look at what the general plan says. We look at what, what are the sensitive receptors there, which would be residential? Um, and is this within the range? And it is below our range for the general plan. Um, and that is not to say that, you know, uh, noise from children playing on a playground can be very annoying to certain people, but it never reaches that decibel rating. So it just occurs, right? Or people playing baseball. It isn't constant all the time. There's a hit of the ball and then there's something else that occurs. Um, and and perhaps in the pickleball, it is a very fast type of sport where you're hearing a lot of ping ping ping. Um, and you know, this isn't unusual. Um, a lot of cities are are wrestling with this and and how do you do it? And how do you create reputation at the same time as mitigating some of the impacts? Um, so it is, it's not an easy answer or an easy solution, but um that's how I looked at the study. I'm hoping I'm answering the question. But that's how I looked at the study, not as a scientist or an expert, but looking at where, 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 where did they show me the sign? Where did they place their uh, noise kind of machines to see where the sound is coming from um on the edges? Uh, so it's it's not a perfect science, I don't think.
Right. Well, you know, I guess the issue that I've had is as I'm hearing is we're 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 not sound engineers, but it sounds like we're trying to be. And I and I think that is a very dangerous thing to do. The 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 reality is that there is a certain consistency and standardization and how we need to approach some of these things because if if we were to use, which is not illegitimate, kind of this concern about is there spiking? Then theoretically, we should be using that similar kind of process for the restaurant down the street, but we don't. And that creates inconsistency, which I, which I'm concerned about. What we, what we tether ourselves to when we look at sound issues, I guess there are two issues. One is that it's not itself the the dispositive issue, right? The whether it's sixty-nine decibels or seventy-one is not going to be the necessarily deciding factor. The second issue is that we want consistency in how we look at it, which is why averaging comes up. It's not perfect, and that goes back to the perfect being the enemy of the good issue. Here, what what we do have is a study that kind of tells us, at least for me, something important about that those two points about what we see again on an average about the sound. And that itself, I think, is meaningful because it it's not the sole issue, but it speaks to, in condemnation with these other factors, the efforts they're taking to mitigate. It it tells me something about how we can try to balance together all of these things. I it I, we're just not going to find a scenario where there is a zero sound solution. If so, then there will be a a lot of people make a lot of money off this uh pickleball if they can do that. But it's it's about balancing it. And and for me, the question ultimately became, is it i- i- is is what has taken place reasonable? And is it consistent with what is already happening at T P C? And and that's kind of where I kind of fell on it uh ultimately.
Yeah, and yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. So so I do, look, I I totally support the fact that additional data, you know, and getting the peak um would be helpful, but to Commissioner Si's point, at the end of the day, we need to stick with what is in the ordinance and the ordinance is telling us, you need to look at, you know, sixty or seventy, you need to look at average. So even if you have the data, which I welcome, I don't see how it would would change the the way we're gonna judge it because then it'll be inconsistent. You know, so um so I'm I'm okay in making a decision. Um, I'm, I also will, I'm throwing it out to my fellow commissioner. I wa- I would also support to add an acoustic fence on the fourth side, which doesn't exist right now, and that might help. You know, that might help um the residents on Mar West possibly who are closest to that side which is open. You know, uh, because that's the the open side, and I think the applicant is, you know, has uh has basically um expressed that he might be interested. And third, you know, just on the um, we didn't address it, but on the hourly um, time, I think we just need to be consistent that this needs to be until seven P M. You know, just to not seven thirty. You know, and uh, that's consistent with the other things that we have proven in C O P. It's just a minor point, but if we go down that route, I I would support that too.
Um, I would agree with the, certainly with the time. Um, I think that was just a, a maybe a typographical error. Um, I I, any thoughts on on the fencing, the additional uh fencing? That came up and Commissioner Amir and I did, were out together today and that was, it just came up as a possibility. We
Yeah, no, I agree with that. Um, but what about the expansion into the other um the other courts? Should we ask for acoustic fencing around that as well?
So right now, there's only, there's no request for expansion into the, so there's one one tennis court that has um, the barrier, the kind of this, the the sound barrier around uh three sides. Um, but there's one side that does it, and it's not even a full side because there's a little fence and an opening. And a portion of that fence is not, has no sound barrier. The other tennis court, in in some ways, it's it would almost really, it's it's not before us. It's not a part of the request. It would absolutely require a new request. So so it's not something that can be, there is no expansion to another tennis court, just to make that really clear. Um, because, you know, one of the things that is is very, very difficult is when people do come to us. The ordinance is really complicated and we under- C O Ps can be really difficult. We understand that, you know, these things happen, but you know, we we also don't want to encourage people to go beyond a C U P, beyond what's allowed and then come to us after three years and say, well, we've been doing it for three years. And in this case, it, I think it is important that in three years you have had so few complaints. That's just a fact. Um, but Um, but uh, but just to be clear, that's not before us, there's no request for an additional tennis court.
Okay, well, so then what I was asking about earlier is completely irrelevant, because I thought that, and I went, I went on today too. We're approving what they're already using.
Yeah.
That's right.
I thought we were adding one, okay.
No.
Oh, my God.
I know, I know.
I realized your confusion earlier, but I wasn't sure where you were going with that.
That's why I was bringing that up earlier, I'm like, how is this not a, an original, why are we not putting the other ones in, okay? Okay, I even, I even read it wrong, like I've been wrong for days, like, okay.
It's, it gets a little confusing when we're starting to divide up the court, and so that was just. I think I understand why it was done for this study, it just, it was flummoxed the commissioners a bit.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize to everyone.
So does that, does that, I'm sorry, we we've closed the public comment period. Um, uh, does that, does that, I'm so sorry, we've closed the public comment period, so there's no further public comment. Um, does that, how does that change your thought process? Cause that's a big, that's pretty significant.
Oh, well, I I appreciated when we went out that the TPC did anticipate they might want to put up the fourth wall. And and that's why I asked some of the speakers where they live, because that is on the east side, right?
Yeah, it's on the Mar West side, basically.
Yeah. So I was trying to get a gauge of where the noise was the worst, because I know there are three walls and not the fourth wall. But yeah, I see, and this is where I get hung up, same as, you know, I think you're all agreeing with me with the sound engineering. Like, does the wall actually change it much? Uh, except at the ground level, I don't know, because I know sound travels up, how much does it catch it? How much does it not catch it? Um. I absolutely agree with my fellow commissioners about, you know, balancing, it's a balancing act. I think I could get on board with approving it with the fourth wall, but with a review period. We, we have to have this comeback in front of us again, because if we have uh, neighbors come in and say. I'm sorry, but the repetitiveness is worse than you think, and maybe it hasn't come up, because maybe restaurants. You know, at, we average the sound for restaurants, but they're not the same as pickleball play, you know? I can understand thinking you're hearing gunshots in in the background all day long could really mess with your mental health, I would imagine. So I'm I'm still cautious about that, but I hear you with the balancing factors, with the ordinance does say sixty. Decibels for residential, and then the increase for the other um. I I I keep forgetting what it's called.
Recreation.
Recreational. And we have an, we have an over, we have, they're so, they're right next to each other. So I I hesitate, because I haven't, yeah, you know what, I'm not. I'm I'm talking myself out of it, because I haven't seen the full data from the sound report. So could we, could we create a resolution in which it's approved if the, if the, if we see the sound report later and. Could, could we build it in to it?
Well, I think what you're, I, it sounds to me like what you may be suggesting is if we approve it. Or maybe we approve it with a three-month review, a short review. Um, and on on review, um, you know, we'd like to see. Uh, of course, hear from people, ha- give that, have a chance, we would take it upon ourselves to do more. Of our own visits with neighbors, um, and coming, and when, when app, the applicant comes back during the review period. Um, you know, I don't know if there's a way to just build in, um, uh, but I, just to be clear, you're, you're just looking at the peak data?
The, yeah, I'm mostly interested in seeing um, what the peaks are and how often, because even if it's only ten decibels, even if it's only five decibels over sixty. Maybe that's allowed in the TPC zone, but recreational, but it's not allowed in residential. But if it's all day long, all the time, it would be like having jackhammering across from your house all the time. I'm concerned about the consistency of it, and and I hear what you all are saying, like, usually, you know, we use standards. Uh, we're following the same standards. I'm not sure the same standards apply to this new pickleball situation. I'm concerned.
And I think, I think if it were happening all day long, your average would not be, that would change your average.
Well, it it wouldn't change it much if it was only five decibels over, it wouldn't change the average that much. I'm worried about not knowing, that's what I'm worried about.
So you're worried about in the residential area?
Yeah.
Um, is it, are the representations that you made, because I believe you made the representation that in the residential area, it never goes. Um, above what's allowed in the residential area. So my focus is really on what the representation is, which, which, which to me was. They're within, they're within, you know.
I think it doesn't go above on average, but Dina, the residential cap is sixty, isn't it?
That's correct.
And we do have numbers over sixty. I think the average didn't go above sixty, maybe.
The average didn't go above sixty.
I'm concerned that if it's constantly five decibels over and it's ping 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 all day long in the residential area. This could be something we've never seen before that we should look at.
Yeah, the problem is you, you, you don't have any evidence of that, I mean.
Right, I need to see.
I understand that, but but. This is my concern about us playing junior sound engineer right now, is because we're, there's a lot of guessing as to what theoretically could be the case. That the, the problem is that there, there is no evidence to suggest that's the case, there, there just isn't. And and what we do see is that, and I happen to agree with this from my math perspective, is that if there was this consistency of spiking. I think you used the word jackhammering, it is going to impact the average, it it is. But, right, I mean.
But how much I'm not a sta- sta- statistician or a sound engineer, I'd like to see what that looks like. Just to be sure.
I think it's almost sounds like what you're saying is you'd like an expand, you'd like a more fulsome report. Within the three months, at the time of the three-month review period?
Right, what I'm saying is I could get behind approving provisionally, but wanting to see more between now and the three-month period. So that we actually could see that da- that extra data for for the sound.
You know, I, so I, I'm sort of the, I I I, so I think on the, on the sound study, I mean, the thing, just empirically being out there. Um, and 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 driving around the different communities. Um, it was virtually impossible to hear the, I don't know if you had an opportunity to do that, but to to hear pickleball beyond. There, there certainly was impact, and I'm looking at the um, sound study. Um. It, it, in the homes, right there, right, um. But I think we're, I think, you know, to to Commissioner Si's point, we, we have a study that's been done. Um, according to industry standard, according to the specif- specifications of town staff. Um, you know, and and I just, I'm, I, I share Commissioner Si's concern that if we start dictating how sound studies should be done. Um, and how they should be interpreted and analyzed, I think we're going way outside of our own area.
I'm not suggesting that, but I don't have the data in front of me, and and, you know, I, I respect the representatives from the TPC, but I don't have the data. I I just feel uncomfortable with that, maybe that's the lawyer in me.
Um, so I think, uh.
Well.
Uh, I, I think.
I think that we're much more on a, on agreement, I mean.
Yeah, I would be inclined to approve this with with a three-month review. Is that something that you would be comfortable with? I'm just vol- o- offering up.
Well, should we, what should we offer? Should we offer this some summer months or spring months, meaning six months? I mean, three months too soon. I mean, would we really get a representation in three months?
A six-month review and uh, wa- was your thinking that the a- an additional sound barrier would be?
Yeah.
Um, installed within six months?
Yeah.
Do you, and how do you feel about the review period, the mitigation proposal?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with um, an additional review period. I, I think that if the um. If TPC is amenable to additional mitigation efforts, which I think they should be, and I'm sure they are. Um, that I think that that, it it would be fine with me. More sound mitigation is better than less, and if it, uh, especially if there's still additional mitigation efforts that they're. Um, able to consider and implement.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Um, I think a six-month review period, I I would support. I I do think I would like to take the time to uh, you know, investigate the neighborhood, talk to neighbors. Um, and I do think that it's, again, it sounds, I just to echo the sentiment that um, uh, TPC. You should, you should continue to um, explore mitigation. Um, uh, to further mitigate sound, if that, if the, the most feasible um, thing, doable thing, viable thing is that. Additional barrier, which is what was my understanding based on conversation. Um, that is something um, to do. I don't necessarily, I kind of wanted to say, um, further mitigations will be pursued. Uh, and we'll want to hear, hear about those in six months, I don't.
Yeah, because if we're, if we're recommending a fence acoustic, I mean, it's just good, takes time.
Exactly.
There's money involved, there's a building permit, it's just gonna take them time to execute on it, so if we want to wait until that's built, I think. Six months sounds like reasonable, three months, I think it's just too soon. I mean, that's my, that, that's my sense. I mean, if we don't want to do the fence acoustic, we could do three months, you know?
No, I I I've six-month, I, I think you're right also, given the time, what, where that falls on the calendar. Um, so I support six-month review, encouraging TPC to ca- to pursue further mitigation to the, to the extent possible. Um, and uh, changing the hours to, so that it's seven, it concludes at seven P M, not seven thirty P M.
Right. That, that's fine with me. One, one thing I'll, I'll also mention in looking at the sound report again, uh, is that. At table three does kind of lay out, I think, where kind of the. The, the core nucleus of sound is, which is to say at the court itself. And it, and according to this table, which uh. This is how I'm, I'm reading it. At the various points that they measure, the, what they call the, the N A L, the noise assessment locations, those locations. The sound dissipated as you go further out, which is generally speaking what you would expect. And and they did it at these locations that it seems to me is, is where we would, you would want them to look. So for example, they're looking at, at N A L four, which is that area over. Right at Marsh Road, and then it looks like N A L three is over. It, it looks like that's over at Mar West and.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure if that's Esperanza, that they were measuring that too, I can't tell quite from the geographical map they have there and uh, at section four point two. But I just wanted to mention that point, just uh, so it's on the record, because the sound report does in fact go into that issue of. How the sound kind of um, travels outside of that immediate area on the court. It, it's true, you can, it's evident here, you would expect this.
Oh, yeah.
It's loudest on the court dissipates out. So if, for example, there's additional mitigation, that, that it, it. It supports the idea that sound should continue to mitigate, it might increase on the court itself.
Right, it probably will create some sort of like a, an aquarium type of effect in in the court, you know, a bit. But we're, we're looking, we, we're more concerned about the residents, less about the players in this case, yeah.
Right, okay.
And hopefully the players are getting better, so.
Okay, um, so then that would be um, uh, a, a motion, um, I think to adopt the resolution. Approving the amendment to the existing C U P with some modifications. Um, modifying to um, add a six-month review period.
I'll second that motion.
So the CEQA findings are also, uh, and the CEQA, and so this is exempt from CEQA.
That's correct.
Um, and I, 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 we're looking for the staff and random to get the exact sections, uh. Uh, but I did agree with them, I do remember when reading.
So, one C, I think, section one C.
Let me make sure I understand the motion.
Yeah, I don't, I hadn't really completed it, um.
Class one categorical exemption, existing facilities.
So, so I guess the, the first part, so we, uh, we do find that it's, that is, we, the, the findings under the zoning ordinance are. Are met for purposes of ex- of of expanding the C U P, and that this is exempt from CEQA under the. Section stated in the staff memorandum, uh, uh, staff memorandum.
And, and are you making changes to exhibit one?
Yeah, so that's what I was sort of going through those, um, so let me pull up exhibit one. So we were um, adding a, I don't believe there's a six-month review period in there.
No, it's not.
So we were adding a six-month review period.
Okay.
We are.
Well, there's two, yeah, to section two, well, it's two, three, that's where we're writing it, right? Says the conditional she reviewed by.
Yeah, so.
Except two, three, as.
Section two paragraph.
Eighty days, actually.
And, oh, and approximately a hundred and eighty days.
Which is a six months, so actually we have it in there, right?
So it is in there.
Where is it?
It's section two, three.
Yeah, it's page three, it's in one.
Yep. See, I thought about what you might want already, as I was mind-reading.
And we, we don't actually have the hour, the resolution doesn't state.
No, but the exhibits to the resolution.
Yeah.
Stated.
Uh, yeah, I was trying to find that, yeah. Oh, here it is, so it's, yeah, it's exhibit one, so it's currently says from nine to seven thirty, and that should be changed to seven.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then.
And then the acoustic fence.
Conditions of approval would also be um. Uh, to, you know, I would leave it a little bit more broad to to pursue additional mitigation measures. Um. Uh, such as the, yeah.
Such as the acoustic fence on the uh.
The acoustic block material.
Solid, I guess.
Placed on the remaining uh, fence, so the, the fourth uh, side of the court.
Like east side, I think.
The east.
I think it's east, yeah.
Yes.
Um, is that the?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
So the motion carries three to one. And the meeting is adjourned.